Good evening. We're gonna go ahead and start our evening session of the Raleigh City Council Public Hearing. I ask that everyone please adhere to their time of three minutes as we move forward through tonight and we work through these challenges that we all face to make this a better city. First, we will have Mr. Dwight Spencer. And also, I do ask, before you start, I ask that everyone, please give your name and your address for the clerk.
Before my time, who, my time has already started?
Yeah.
My time has already started, but I want to pass you this, Ms. Gill, to pass to the City Councilmember, and what you're about to get is four points quickly. And I do want to commend the councilmembers for appointing such a great Transit Authority. I think you deserve a round of applause yourself. Thank you so much. Members of the City Council, my name is Dwight Spencer, and I am, my office resides at 205 Fayetteville Street, Suite 220, and I am a Transit organizer and a Transit consultant. At this particular time, I'm gonna ask that all Go Raleigh bus operators please stand in the audience. And remain standing, please. Remain standing. Members of the Raleigh City Council, Mayor, the Honorable Cory Branch presiding, Mayor Protem, good evening, and I'm wishing Mayor McFarlane a speedy recovery. I rise tonight representing the bus operators of this great city, and I want to make this very clear, this is not a march on transit. We have a great transit system here in the city of Raleigh. The route assignment and seniority management did not present the new way of assignment in the route and the commend- commendation of the expansion of the East Raleigh this past January to the Raleigh Transit Authority, RTA. At the December RTA Route Committee meeting, a design, a Transit driver serves on, it was designed that a Transit driver, Route Committee served, and served on this committee to resolve any hiccups with the drivers can be worked out before a full RTA act of matters. Management then proceeded, presented a dr- a dr- a drastic change on how the route assignment for the East Raleigh expansion would be made by passing the process, by passing the process and bringing it, the assignment for the East Raleigh expansion were made, passing the process by bringing in December to the full RTA board. They went beyond the Route Committee. And, uh, and so it took like ninety days or so, but it took them five months to put it together. And I'm gonna move on down since my time is going by so quickly. I'm gonna move down to the leadership. The current management has had problems retaining staff as well as labor turnover since 2015. They have been, they have been two HR directors, two maintenance managers, three safety managers, and a multiple road supervisors. High turnover in the operators, new and old drivers are not staying, not because of the work of inconsistent or poor service and riding public. Missteps due to run and scheduling, maintenance issues, and the lack of reaction to the safety concerns by putting the same buses back on the streets without proper repair. Operators are frustrated and conflicted with what is written rules versus verbal instruction. This confusion leads to unsafe working conditions, working deserves clear rules and fair treatment. Retaliation, can I, can I please just finish? I got, it was a couple of minutes. Thank you, Mayor Protem. Retaliation, when employees voice concerns regarding the work and condition of the company responding to the blame, employees not investigating the problem, and upon review, you will especially seated minutes of the Raleigh Transit Authority, you will find in system, alleged retaliation.
Is it what you have here?
It's what I have here.
Okay. So, we're gonna take this, and actually, what I want to say is, first of all, to the drivers, thank you all, 'cause when you're on the buses, moving those buses around, people don't know that you're not city employees, that you're Transit Department employees. So, as ambassadors, I want to say thank you for what you do, day in and day out, and moving the city forward.
Before I take my seat, Mayor Protem, we still ask that the management of Disco Raleigh be replaced, starting with General Manager, Ms. Marie Parker, General Operation Manager, Mr. Reginald Caldwell, Safety Manager, Mr. Morris Cook, and also Mr. Matthew Caldwell, to be replaced. And I sit, go ahead.
So, so, 'cause your time, and what I'm gonna ask is, with these concerns that you've addressed here, is that staff take this information and bring a report back to the City Council as well as a review of our contract with Transit Department on where we stand with that contract, and I ask that, actually, the report goes directly, with no objection from the Council, directly to the Transit and Transportation Committee, so we can address it there, and on what we can and can't do, as well as information from the City Attorney on what, remember, what our responsibility, how far we can go or cannot go in handling this matter, but it does need to be addressed, 'cause these drivers move the city, and I want to make sure that, you know, we have, it is a motion.
All right. So, I would just ask that the full council get a copy. Some of us are not on that committee.
Correct. We will pass it on to the full council. It was moved in, it was probably second, by Councilman Crowder. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right, motion carries.
Mayor Protem, I thank you, and I just want to say, who moved this city?
We moved this city!
Thank you, sir.
Next, we have Mr. Walton Dobbin.
What a crowd there.
Give it, let's give it one second, some people are leaving.
You can, Mr. Dobbin, may proceed.
Everybody good? Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Walter Dobbin. I'm representing the Dobbin family at 1,000 Crosslink Road and 1020 Crosslink Road. We got a traffic calming project that's going on on our highway. Now, right now, we support that project fully, the family and most of the neighborhood. The problem we've got, we've been there probably fifty-four years now, and in that fifty-four years, it's been a lovely place right now. Everything is seeming to be running smooth. Been to all the meetings for this traffic calming project, but when it came down to the very end, they proposed moving the bus stop from where it is now, three hundred feet south in front of our property. Now, what this is gonna do is gonna cause congestion, gonna cause traffic visibility, and I think it's gonna be a safety issue. We oppose that bus lane being put according to the plans that the city has put out for us.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
That's basically it.
Okay. So, the issue here is the bus stop, the location?
Yeah. We're asking the council to cease, or whatever you want to do, to stop that bus lane, the bus path from being put there.
Okay. You have a question?
As opposed to that, sir, maybe we should ask Transportation to get back to us on why they suggest the change in the bus stop, so that we'd have some information as to why they believe it's a better location than where it is now.
Right. We've asked that same question of them, and they couldn't give us an answer on it. So, can you get back with us on it?
I believe we can get an answer.
Yeah. We'll, we'll work and get an answer, maybe a future meeting, have it as a special item.
Sure. We can bring that back and present it.
Okay. 'Cause, yeah.
So, we'll make you aware, we're gonna have it as a special item, and bring it to the full council, so we can understand this challenge. We've dealt with some of these similar before.
Okay.
And we'll get back to you, Mr. Dobbin.
And we'll let you know when it's on the agenda, so you can be in attendance.
All right. Appreciate it. Thank you much.
Thank you. Next, we have, and forgive me if I mispronounce his name, Issa Shakai? Shakai? Issa Sheikh?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Issa Sheikh. I live on 2505 Simpkins Road in Raleigh, and I'm gonna be talking about a piece of property that my family has owned in, on 2401 East Milbrook Road in North Raleigh. We purchased that piece of property in 1993 and have maintained it in the best shape and possible, that's possible. Never had any problems or issues with it. In 2018, last year, it was recorded in three of my brother's names. One of them had some issues, so he filed bankruptcy, and while it was under the trustee, the store operator was paying rent to the trustee, so the trustee had money, and the store operator overnight, just because he got scared from the bankruptcy, he just shut store, dumped trash outside, plus people on the street that were coming in dumping trash. The trustee said, nobody touches nothing, I'm gonna be handling it until it's done, and then you guys can do whatever you want after it was auctioned off. At the auction, my two brothers bought the place back again from the auction, and we were not aware of any issues at all. And recently, we received a notice from the city of Raleigh that they are about to put a lien on the property to sell it, and we, it kinda like freaked us out, because we didn't know what's going on, until I, we got down to the letters and all the mail that we got, and it explained that during that time, that the city of Raleigh, which I spoke to the city of Raleigh, the management, and one of the attorneys, and they told me that they've tried to contact us, which in reality, they did not. They sent a letter to the store that was closed, they sent a letter to my dad's twenty-five or twenty-some years old address, that nobody lived there, and the funny thing is, the city of Raleigh received a signed letter of receipt of that notice from that, I don't know, who lives there now. So, I'm here tonight to ask the City Councilmembers, which I really appreciate you giving me the time to speak tonight, to waive all the charges against my family on that property due to the lack of delivering a notice to the owners. They've had probably a lot of ways to find the owners, and we're not far. There was three owners on the property when they send the notices. They've only sent it to the store, and they've sent it to my youngest brother that has filed a bankruptcy, and I don't know where they came up with his address other than the store itself.
Okay.
What does that means?
Your time, your three minutes is up.
All right. I'm gonna summarize it in ten seconds, if you don't mind.
Sir, sir, your time is up, and we've got a long night ahead of us. Please respect the rules, okay?
So, did my message come across to you guys that?
Yeah. You're asking for the lien to be removed?
Without, because we didn't know, and we did not have any notice, with the city of Raleigh had plenty of names to send the address to.
Can we, can we have staff, um, I think, I know there's some information that we received to given, on what communications or what happened with this one, this case?
Yes, we can provide some of that information right now, if you'd like. We have a little PowerPoint, uh, that's mostly associated with the nuisance that was abated, uh, or we could provide some more in the follow-up. I mean, we, we do believe that we complied with the notification provisions, recognizing that there's, unfortunately, it didn't get to the owners as intended, but we, we, we did make that effort on the, associated with notifications. We can talk through that some more if you wish, but that's.
And you say your brother, one of the, one of the owners is your brother, and he did?
Three, three of the owners are my brothers.
Right.
Two of them never got a notice.
Okay. But one of them did receive a notice?
No. They sent it to his father's twenty-some-year-old address.
The address that they had on file?
Well, no, there's two other names that has address on file, too. Nobody sent nothing to them.
Mr. Branch, what we can do is write up and work with the city attorney's office to write you up a very specific outline of the notification procedures, and we'll, we'll bring that back to you.
Okay. Okay. We're gonna get some more information and try to figure this one out.
Okay, and I'd be more than happy to meet with you anytime.
Could you also provide options for possible relief in this case? 'Cause, because I think if, my impression is that if they had received notice, they would've acted on it.
Immediately. We have just cleaned twice since then. We've cleaned twice more trash than this that people dump on our property.
Certainly, council can make that decision.
Okay.
But we can make the decision if we know what the options are.
Right. Yes, we'll provide that to you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak tonight.
Ms. Tara Robbins?
Just to let you know, I don't know, we reached out to the city clerk, so she's withdrawn her.
Oh, she did?
She got her answer yesterday.
She has withdrawn.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mark Shulman?
Good evening, city councilmembers. My name is Mark Shulman. I live at 209 Bailey Ridge Drive in Morrisville. For full disclosure, I'm the former mayor of Morrisville, but I still believe elected officials should do what they're asked to do by, by law. And I'm talking tonight about the Wake County, I mean, I'm sorry, the Stone, Wakestone lease with RDU Airport, and you all are aware of this agreement. As you know, the city of Raleigh, the county of Wake, the county of Durham, and the city of Durham, are all four members, they're, they're the governmental bodies that run the RDU Airport Authority. Part of that authority that you have over the airport is the right to be involved in major decisions, those are long-term leases and sales of airport property. This lease agreement that Wakestone has with the airport is considered a lease, but when you add the twenty-five years, the ten years, the two years ramp up, two years cleanup, you're at thirty-nine years. It's practically a long-term lease. More importantly, Wakestone is actually selling our taxpayer property as, as, as their goods to private companies. So, they're literally selling our assets, the taxpayers' assets. What I'm asking the city council to do tonight is get involved. It's your, it's your right, it's your duty as a city council, as a member of this board, to be involved. I'll cite General Statute Number 63-56F. No real property shall, and I'm, I'm truncating this a little bit, but read it on your own if you'd like. No real property shall be disposed of by the board, or sale, or otherwise, except by the authority of the appointed governing bodies, but the board may lease space and grant concessions on airports for aeronautical purposes. I would say that a quarry is not aeronautical purposes. I would also say this is practically a sale, and it's certainly an otherwise. So, please get involved, it's not too late, get your city attorneys involved, and be a part of the solution. And I want to thank you guys very much for your attention. This is a big deal for a lot of taxpayers in Wake and Durham County, for residents in, in Morrisville, residents in Raleigh, so I appreciate your attention. It's not too late to get involved and do something about it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Calla Wright? Ms. Wright?
I'm a resident of 613 Cooper Road, Raleigh, and I'm here today to discuss the reused wastewater tower gentrification of loss of land in southeast Raleigh. The reused wastewater tower adjures my property, and according to city ordinance for 2015 for 11, the city acknowledges that the trees provide environmental aesthetic benefits. Trees provide erosion control, reduce water runoff, as filter, as help airborne pollutants, and provide wildlife habitat, sequesters carbon and release oxygen. It is in the intent of the city to prudently protect and manage the urban forest to secure its benefits. However, in early March of this year, the city destroyed the natural habitats, cutting of trees and removal of all forms of natural setting. As a result, the land slopes, the city land slopes, and the water runs off into my land, extreme erosion, damage to my property, and the property value has continued to decline because of the city of Raleigh has destroyed the natural habitat that adjourns, adjourns my land. People continue to trespass, and safety remains an issue. I have been raking, raking up the city's leaves, limbs, since the construction of the water tower in 2009, which Charles Meeker, the city council installed to exclusively benefit the Raleigh Country Club and its upscale white members. We need the city to, the city has also failed to provide knowledge and develop, knowledge and developers of the land, for the citizens in southeast Raleigh, and they failed to provide the knowledge to support the citizens in our efforts to remain in their property. You have allowed the white privileged citizens and the Raleigh social elites to come in and overtake our community. City councils, you are accountable to the citizens of Raleigh for your actions, particularly to the people who feel that they have been exploited and taken advantage of. During your tenure, the council fails to closely monitor the equity and the citizens, the city's redevelopment. We now hold the, have the haves and have nots, and the prosperous citizens who thrive and those who have lost and feel left out because of gentrification. And we will give our city council members and the mayor their final evaluation during our upcoming election this season.
Ms. Addison Woosley?
I live at 2904 Creek Moss Avenue, and my name is Addison Woosley. I strongly believe that abortion is murder. I also believe murder is wrong, so I'm here to ask you to make abortion illegal in Raleigh. Abortion should be illegal because it's murder. The definition of murder is the killing of one human being by another without justification and often with attended malice. When mothers choose to slaughter their innocent babies, they already have fingerprints, noses, they can recognize their mom's voice, they can hiccup, and their heart is beating. On ultrasounds, the baby tries to move away from the disturbing instruments they use to kill the baby. The baby's mouth opens wide in a scream when being killed. These babies are alive. They feel being killed, it hurts them, and there's nothing they can do about it. There's no way around it. Abortion is murder. So, why is it? If an infant is destroyed before birth, there's no problem, but if killed after birth, it's considered a brutal murder. These babies aren't its or fetuses. They are human beings, and they deserve to get the same human rights as any other person. As good old Dr. Seuss said, "A person's a person no matter how small." But every single day, a hundred and twenty-five thousand small people are being slaughtered in America, just in America, and abortion is performed every twenty-five seconds. Regardless of age, race, or size, people should be protected. We need to stand up and protect the babies. Another big reason abortion is wrong is that God says it's wrong. It's only by His grace your mother didn't abort you, because if she did, you wouldn't be sitting here today. In Jeremiah 1:5, it says, "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you; before you were born, I set you apart." God says babies are alive in the womb. Some people say that abortion should be the mom's choice, it's her body. But what about the baby's choice? The baby's body is in the mom's body. Abortion reminds me of slavery. Owners said that their slaves were their property, and they could do whatever they wanted with them, just how moms say about their babies. My hope is that in a few years, we'll look back at abortion and think, that was so cruel, I can't believe we did that, just how we all look back at slavery. The question is, who will you be? The slave owner, the man nailing the whites' only sight on the water fountain, Rosa Parks, or Abraham Lincoln? Who are you going to be? Make a choice. My choice is made. I'm here today standing up for what's right. I'm here today speaking for those who can't speak for themselves. Are you choosing to be like the plantation worker flogging the little black child, or are you going to protest even if it costs your life, like Martin Luther King Jr.? Who are you going to be? If you think abortion should, if you think abortion should be illegal, would you please stand up? We need to change the law to change the.
Order, 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 order.
If you think abortion should be illegal, would you please stand up? We need to change the law to change the world, so let's stand up and do it. Thank you.
Order, order. Everyone, y'all, please, please. Sir, please, sit down. I ask. Y'all, please, please. Y'all, please. Y'all, I need order, y'all, excuse me. Excuse, excuse me, y'all. So, so, everyone, please, I need order in here. So, yes, I am a black man, and yes, everyone who signs up has a right to speak. That is the rules of the land. I cannot come up here and say you can speak or you can't speak.
But I'd like to remind everybody, we have rules under Mayor Protem.
So, I ask, I ask that you all keep your comments, as everyone has, to the council.
Shouting out, making comments when you're not at the podium is not permitted in this room. We have house rules here, if you don't abide by them, you forfeit your opportunity to speak, so please be respectful of everybody regardless of what they have to say.
So, so, we are going to proceed. I ask that comments are refrained. Everyone has a right who has signed up. I've given everyone that right, regardless of what anyone has said, even when my name has been used. So, Tommy Watts. Zach Brady.
Good evening. My name is Zach Brady. I live at 8528 Plymouth Hill Drive in Wake Forest. I'm here again to plead with you to make Raleigh a sanctuary city for the unborn. As I continue to deal with objections to making abortion illegal, this month, I'd like to address this question. Is abortion simply a women's issue that men have no right to speak on? Are men only interested in preventing women's rights? That's the question. Here's the argument from the pro-abortion crowd. Men don't have uteruses, nor can they become pregnant or know what it's like, so they should just remain silent. Ending an unborn child's life should be left up to a woman and her doctor, but this type of thinking is problematic for several reasons. Number one, when women procure abortions, they are doing so because they've been impregnated by men. Women can't get pregnant without men, therefore, the babies inside these women also belong to men. Fathers should have equal rights to determine what happens to their own children. In addition, nearly fifty percent of the children that are murdered in the womb each year are males. If each gender is only qualified to make decisions pertaining to its own gender, shouldn't it follow that women who are pregnant with male children aren't qualified to make that decision to end the life of the male? Two, if men have no right to speak on this issue, shouldn't the pro-abortion crowd reject the Roe v. Wade decision made by nine all-male justices? Shouldn't they stop giving money to male politicians who speak regularly about abortion? Most importantly, shouldn't they stop going to abortion mills in this country, where the vast majority of abortionists are males? It's funny how if men affirm abortion, they're qualified to speak, but if they disagree, they're. their opinion is no longer valid. Finally, if this type of reason is correct, it would apply to a whole host of other situations. Take slavery as an example. Would it be reasonable for a slave owner... Just stop my time.
Keep going, sir, sir, please continue. Y'all, y'all, just...
Listen, listen, and you'll understand. Listen, and you'll understand.
Finally, if this type of reasoning is correct, it would apply to a whole host of other situations. Take slavery as an example. Would it be reasonable for a slave owner to say, "You can't object to slavery unless you personally owned or lost slaves, you don't know what it's like to lose slaves"? Or what about a man who beats his wife? Can single people object to wife beating? They don't know what it's like to be married or have a wife. How about men who molest little boys? Can women object to this? They don't have male genitalia, and they don't know what it's like to be a man or a little boy, who are they to judge? Of course, it's easy to see that each of these examples are morally reprehensible, and they should be condemned by any rational-thinking human being regardless of their gender, marital status, or whether they've owned slaves. This type of thinking is absurd, and it should be rejected, but it's just this type of thinking that is used by supporters of abortion to try to stifle the conversation. The fact is, abortion is not a gender issue, it's a human rights issue. Men aren't trying to take away women's rights, but rather, they're advocating for the rights of tiny women in the womb to live. Abortion is a great evil and injustice that is occurring in our city every day, for both men and women, and both genders should be standing up with one voice condemning it. In Matthew 25, Jesus states the way that the way someone treats the most vulnerable and helpless in our society is the way that they are ultimately treating Him. How are you treating the unborn, city council? This is the way you're treating Christ, and you will be held accountable. Abortion is murder. No, no, I was interrupted, and I'm almost done. I was interrupted. I was interrupted, and they used 30 seconds of my time.
Sir, 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 they did not use your time, you stopped on your own.
He made the announcement, he said that they are to be respectful and allow us to say what we need to say.
You've only made your point, you're not going to make any other points, you've used up your time.
I have a major point I'd like to make.
Zach, Zach, please, your time is up.
Good evening, my name is Brian Brady, I live at 1316 Trail and Rose Court in Wake Forest. I'm a follower of Jesus Christ, and as many of my brothers and sisters have in the past months, I'm here to remind you of the modern-day Holocaust that is happening all around us in Raleigh. Now, as local magistrates appointed by God, you are to wield the sword of righteousness. You have the authority to stop this murder of the preborn, children who are being ripped apart by their arms and legs, chemically burned alive and decapitated under your jurisdiction and against the law of God, thou shall not kill. Yet Roe versus Wade has wiped out a whole generation since 1973, even when our Constitution does not give the courts the ability to make laws. It has been obvious over the last two months that our testimonies have been ignored. As my brother Jeff Durbin did in Arizona, I wanted to present this as a social justice issue in hopes to catch your attention. This is what Jeff said. "Long ago, in a patriarchal society, a group of old, white, gendered males delivered an ignorant, unscientific opinion that allowed people to target a group of oppressed identities in the womb. Some of these human beings are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgendered, etc. This discrimination was based on social power, prejudice, and privileged aims at promoting ageism. It was an example of collusion by a group that had just recently wanted not to drink from the same water fountain or sit next to a black person on a bus. Did this catch your attention? Or is it just right to simply recognize that the murder of innocent human beings should not be accepted? Mrs. Stewart, I saw this statement on your website. By bringing diverse voices to the table and focusing on our future, we can build a city that is inclusive and beneficial to everyone. Now, I just want to ask you, does this statement include being inclusive and beneficial to everyone include the preborn human beings in the womb? In a 1939 letter written by Margaret Sanger, who's the founder of Planned Parenthood, she said, "We do not want word to go out that we want to exterminate the negro population." Unfortunately, she has succeeded in doing just that. Black babies are aborted three times more often than white babies. Abortion is the number-one killer of black lives in the United States. Don't black lives matter. So I stand before you tonight and ask that you would stand up for those who cannot stand for themselves. This includes black children, little girls, gays, transgender, etc., but more importantly, human beings. Dietrich Bonhoeffer, a German pastor during World War II, said, "Silence in the face of evil is itself evil. God will not hold us guiltless. Not to speak is to speak, not to act is to act. You must decide if you are with Christ or against Him, there is no neutrality. More importantly, I want to speak tonight about the goodness of our God to both you and everyone in this room. It is a message that the human race is wicked and sinful, as we all have broken God's law, and we deserve hell and everything in it. This is evident by our culture of death that supports the sin, the sin of murdering little children, but there's forgiveness in Christ, and only Christ, if you believe the message of the gospel. This is what the Bible says He did for those who repent and trust in Him. But He was pierced for our transgression, He was crushed for our iniquities. Upon Him was the chastisement that brought us peace, and with His wounds, we are healed. Turn to Jesus and reject Roe versus Wade to make Raleigh a sanctuary city." Thank you.
William Roach.
I live at 815 Durkin Place in Wake Forest, North Carolina. My name is Dr. Bill Roach, I'm an author, professor, and minister of the gospel. Like so many people in Raleigh today, I'm a transplant from another region. Originally, I was born and raised in a small rural farming community of Salem, Iowa. Let me tell you about my hometown and our work with the Underground Railroad. In the 1830s, Salem was established by a group of evangelical Christians. Since Salem was located just 20 miles north of the Missouri border, it quickly became an important depot of the Underground Railroad. The citizens were intent upon establishing Salem as a sanctuary city for fugitive slaves fleeing their slave owners. If you were to travel to Salem today, you would notice that every road leading into and out of the town has an S curve. Every little boy and girl raised in Salem are quickly taught that the S curves were intentionally engineered into the layout of the town. The purpose of those S curves was to slow down the slave owners pursuing their fugitive slaves, namely, in order to pass through the town, the slave owners would have to slow down their horse-drawn carriages both going into and out of town. This deliberate act of transportation engineering ensured the fugitive slaves were one step ahead of the pursuing slave owners. Salem is also known for its strong abolitionist stance. Today, a museum exists named the Lwelling House in order to communicate and commemorate the heroic acts of Salem's faithful citizens who built cellars under their houses and tunnels throughout the town to free fugitive slaves. Today, we view the people of Salem and those who operated the Underground Railroad as moral heroes because they operated and opposed the dominant moral evil against humanity during their age, which was the human slave trade. From our vantage point, we praise the people of Salem because they made their city into a sanctuary city to protect the weakest members of society. From the S-curved streets to the blood, sweat, and tears it took to dig the tunnels throughout the town, Salem was intent to do whatever it takes to stand up for those made in the image of God. Today, we find ourselves in a similar situation. We live in a day and age when people view the preborn as less than human and seek to harm and kill them. Unlike the fugitive slaves, who were also viewed as less than human, the preborn in our age are unable to flee from their present-day assailants, who have traded their whips and nooses for a pair of clamps and vacuums to rip their victims limb from limb and suck the brains from the baby's head. I hope we can learn from the people of Salem by making the city of Raleigh a sanctuary city to protect its innocent preborn citizens from the great moral evil towards humanity in our age, abortion. I want to remind each of you today, if Salem can make itself into a sanctuary city for the innocent people of its jurisdiction, so too can the city of Raleigh make itself into a sanctuary city for the innocent preborn children of our jurisdiction. So I ask the question, if not, why not? Nothing is stopping you. In fact, God's law commands you to do it. One other thing I want us to remember is that one of the key people with the Underground Railroad was Harriet Tubman, who's going to be shortly on our $20 bill. She was called the Moses of her people. So standing with her and the people of Salem, I say, "Let my people go. Let our preborn children live."
Thank you. David Boobaltz.
Gotta give it to the clerk, sir.
Here you go, ma'am. My name is David Boobaltz, my address is 527 Keesler Drive, Suite 104 in Cary. So, I'm passing those along, I'd like you guys to see that. Could you please pass those along to the council members? You've got some there, too.
We'll get it, we'll get it, go ahead.
Okay, well, if the clerk could pass them along, that'd be great.
Go ahead, we'll get it, go ahead, sir. Sir.
Your time is rolling, sir.
So, first of all, I'd like to say, Steph Mendel, it's disgusting that you turn your back on us and on these babies. It is. Look, but it's not disrespectful to me, it's disrespectful to my God. And my God is all-powerful, the almighty God, the one who created the universe, and you will stand accountable. You will stand accountable. I pray for your repentance of that, because with repentance, you can be saved. That's what it takes. I know a God who is mighty to save. Now, listen, listen, three months ago, we first came here to urge you, to urge you to stand up for the unborn. It's been 90 days, and no action has been taken. And so, I really clearly wanted to give you the benefit of the doubt, but it looks like from now after 90 days that you have not, you don't care for these children. So I want to ask you directly, one by one, do you stand for child, this child-killing or not? Mr. David Cox, do you stand for this child-killing?
No, ma'am.
Yes or no? Silence is consent, it always has been. Do you stand for abortion or not? Do you stand for the child-killing or not?
No, ma'am.
Silence is consent, it's deafening. Russ Stevenson, do you stand for abortion, the child-killing, yes or no?
They don't have no womb.
Yeah. Mr. Branch, it's a simple question. You should know your stance. Look, if you are proud of the child-killing, you should say yes, right? But you can't, what's holding you back? Mrs. Crowder, Mr. Thompson, obviously, we know where Ms. Mendel stands, but listen, you see those pictures? Why do people not want to see those pictures? If it's just a clump of cells, why does it matter? It's because it is a destroyed human being with value, which is why you turn your heads. That's why. Because if it's a child, if it's just, if it's just a clump of cells, it doesn't matter, right? If it's just a clump of cells, and I said, "Mr. Cox, do you affirm the removing of cancer in a cancer patient?" I'd say, "Yes." You wouldn't stay silent? Your silence betrays the fact that you know this is a human being, that you know these human beings deserve life. May God help you all.
I ask that you all please be respectful, please. Johnny Thomas. Mr. Johnny Thomas. All right, he's not present. Sandy Irving.
I am Sandy Irving, I live at 406 Yarmouth Road. I want to share with you one experience our guardian son, in his 30s, had with the Raleigh policeman. One morning recently, after he got his son off to school, he was driving while black. An officer pulled him over for an alleged minor infraction. The officer, with trembling hands, required him to get out of his car, twisted his arms, required him to put his head on the car, and finally released him with no charges. Excessive use of force? Our son was so upset, and his arm and shoulder felt dislocated, he went to the ER. When he called us and shared the event, I suggested he file a formal complaint. He emphatically declined, saying if he turned in his name and address, he would be targeted. As citizens of Raleigh, this encounter causes us great concern. As white parents who always trusted police, it never occurred to us to have the talk with our teenage son. While always aware, we are now more aware that systemic racism is rampant in housing, banking, employment, schools, and policing. We must speak out and stand for more training and education. Tonight, I'm asking the city council to recognize that racial profiling is prevalent in RPD. Our police chief has said, "Police are human." Yes, and humans can be trained and improved. RPD needs to be protectors of all, not defenders of some, and suspicious of others, especially not suspicious based on race that can lead to harm and shootings. A community oversight board with power to investigate, subpoena, and discipline will provide for independent investigations and important due process for police. It's an opportunity to help RPD recognize problems, find solutions, improve, and work to eliminate systemic racism from policing. Thank you.
Thank you. Dean, okay, he's coming, I didn't know if you heard me.
My name is Dean Irving, I also live at 406 Yarmouth Road, and I am speaking in favor of establishing a community oversight board with the power to investigate, subpoena, and discipline. A number of years ago, our black son was visiting us in our all-white neighborhood. He likes to sit on our front porch and use his phone. One day, a policeman driving along our street stopped and wanted to know what he was doing. We invited the officer in and had a good conversation with him. Officer was very professional and polite. My wife asked if he was profiling. This black officer said, "Yes, that is what we are expected to do in this neighborhood." On a slightly different subject, I realize I am a racist. I was raised totally segregated and almost totally isolated, and where I live now, I am still isolated, except for my life choices. My wife and I have been studying racism and white privilege now for several years at church and in the community. I am learning how I have benefited from institutional racism. There are many racist systems that work to my advantage as a white man. I am sure I recognize only a few of these systems. For instance, I'm not afraid to come here and speak. Our black son would never come here, be identified and speak, much less file a complaint. There's just no way. I think I'll always struggle with not being a racist. I have my own racist stereotypes. Thus, I have empathy for our white male police officers. Hopefully, they did not grow up as segregated as I did, but it's hard not to be affected by all the white privilege around us. Please take this opportunity to create a board that will be fair to everyone and encourage all of us to grow, to respect each other, and even to love each other. Thank you.
Joe Burmester.
Good evening. My name is Joe Burmester. I live at 2121 North Hills Drive, Apartment I. That's District A, Mr. Thompson. I'm here to urge council support and implementation of a police community oversight board as well, with the power to subpoena, investigate, and discipline. Let me give you some background of why that's important to me. I'm the father of two birthed children and two adopted African-American kids. For twenty-five years, my wife and I fostered eighty-five children, about half of whom were of color. We've been active in racial reconciliation groups for many years. Our closest friends are people of color. I'm also the executive director of Lozen Fishes Ministry, an out-of-school program that's based in Mount Peace Baptist Church in southeast Raleigh, where we are currently serving thirty-five youth of color and their families. That background helps me see that police interactions with me as a white man and the interactions with people of color are different. My eighteen-year-old son, who is African-American, has made some bad decisions. He's been to the detention center. He's been in prison. Through that, my interactions with the Raleigh Police Department have been very professional, very reasonable, even caring. But the experiences of my friends of color, whether they're the youth and family of Lozen Fishes or black and brown people that I know otherwise, is much different. They have encounters on much more trivial matters. There's much more use of force. There's a cloud of distrust and fear on both sides. And I grew up thinking of a police officer as my friend, but my black and brown brothers and sisters grew up afraid of the police. This divergent experience is not acceptable, and with more than forty percent of Raleigh's population now people of color, the issue will only become more divisive. So, I support a police community oversight board, not because I think police officers are bad people. Most of them are terrific. But we live in a racist world. Our institutions have been established over time to protect the unfair advantages of white people. And whether we like it or not, local neighborhood expectations influence police responses. So, in combination with continued training and community engagement, I think the oversight board will help ensure that inappropriate activities and unfair procedures will be exposed and rooted out. But there's another reason. Remembering my former life in the accounting profession, we were required to keep ourselves independent of our clients. But not just independent, we had to be free of anything that was perceived as a conflict. And so, the oversight board with tools to subpoena, investigate, and discipline will help address perception issues of all of our residents, white and of color, and that's critical. So, you know, after the April, excuse me, the February 2012 murder of Trayvon Martin, my family marched with others chanting, "No justice, no peace." We have work to do to provide justice to all of our residents, but a police community oversight board, I think, can help us turn that chant to K-N-O-W, no justice, so that we can know peace in our community.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. So, that concluded those that signed up for our sentence petition. Tonight, we'll move to the other matters of our public hearings tonight. The first matter is our city budget. At this time, we will open it up for those to provide input and comment on the city budget. How many, only the city budget. How many people here are to speak to the city budget? Okay, hold on. Hold your hands up one more time, please. Okay, seven. Okay. I count seven. It'll be three minutes apiece. And I ask that you all come down front, that I wish to speak on the budget. And please give your name and your address when you speak. And again, the chair recognized seven speakers.
Good afternoon. My name is Octavia Rainey. I live at 1516 East Lane Street, and I'm going to speak on policy.
Ms. Rainey, hold on one second. Stop the talking. Give people a chance that are at scene to exit, so we can hear everyone clearly. Ms. Rainey may proceed.
Okay, my name is Octavia Rainey. I live at 1516 East Lane Street, Raleigh. The first I want to speak on is SB 25. This is the second time I have came before you to ask you to make that a Raleigh bill. June 2015, that became a statewide bill. It stripped the cities of all of their responsibility in housing, except for if you are a historic district or a neighborhood conservation overlay district. This is the statewide bill. It was passed in 2015. This bill need to be overturned. Right now, the only hope is that it is a Raleigh bill. So, I'm asking you, the second time, to go to the General Assembly in January and advocate for this to be a Raleigh bill. The second issue, I would like to ask the city to stop using displacement. You have used displacement since the 1960s. You have displaced in College Park, Ottawa, Thompson Hunter 1, Thompson Hunter 2, South Park, Downtown East. You have stripped the inner city of all the black businesses. There are only three restaurants that exist in southeast Raleigh. Displacement is no good, and it should not be used on the BRT either. It is ridiculous. Y'all have destroyed the black community. Y'all have destroyed the character of the neighborhood, the culture of the neighborhood. There's nothing left in the inner city. And what you're doing in East College Park is a shame, building those big box houses. That's y'all's decision to do that. That's y'all's decision to destroy. That's y'all's decision to run us away. This city council is wrong for doing that. Y'all passed that, but you are wrong. It is time for a change on this city council. Y'all do not respect black people at all. You always do things contradictory of black people. You have destroyed it, and what you did to Smokey Hollow in 1960 is ridiculous. You don't even accept it. You don't claim it. You don't recognize it. Half of that was the black community that was destroyed. Smokey Hollow was your first redevelopment. Then you went and fought war and did the same thing. Then you spread it out, and you even told lies in your comprehensive plan about the black neighborhoods. When is the city going to stop destroying the black neighborhoods? The BRT is the last step. And what you plan to do on New Bern Avenue is just arsenal. It is a shame. Displacement should be removed from the BRT on New Bern Avenue. There should be no grant that calls for displacement at all.
Thank you, Ms. Rainey. Whomever's next.
Council members, my name is Rolando Diaz. I'm the board chair for the Interface Food Shuttle, 1001 Blair Drive in Raleigh. Your support, and we want to thank everybody here that is supporting the Interface Food Shuttle. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Whomever's next can come on. Is there anyone else here to speak to the budget?
Thank you, people in green shirts.
Good evening. My name is Rolanda Byrd, 3739.
Ms. Byrd, hold on one second.
Thank you.
Give them a chance to exit. Thank you all for coming out tonight for your work. Ms. Byrd, you can go ahead.
3739 National Drive. So, I came in here with a, well, this morning, you know, when I woke up, I had another thought of the reason why I was standing up here about this budget. But it came to my attention because of an experience I had on Memorial Day weekend at Oak Park Pool off of Glenwood Avenue. Now, this pool is, there's a $500 membership to actually even attend this place unless you're invited by a guest. We were invited by, we went, we called before we went, me and my nieces and nephews, my little two- and three-year-old nieces and nephews, to attend this pool. They told us we could pay $2 to enter the pool, because we didn't have a membership for one day. While we were there, the members that were, actually had paid the $500 to be there, invited us back the next day for the cookout for Memorial Day. While we were there, the same amount of people that came the day before didn't come at the same time, but we all intended to. Five of us came early, and the other five came later on. When it came time for the other five to come and get in, they did not allow them to come in. First of all, of course, you know, there was a majority of white folks in this pool to be able to afford a $500 membership for the summer. So, that experience brought me to Chavis Pool, Chavis Park's pool that's been closed down since 2014, and not being a place of experiencing a great summer as a child, where I grew up and where I attended a pool when I was in, you know, that age. And we wanted to make sure that that space has not been forgotten about. I know there's a plan in place for it, and it's a phase one that did not include the pool being reopened or rebuilt. And as I understand, the pool will not be rebuilt, that it's going to be like a new aquatic center or a splash pad type thing going on. But my recommendation would to make sure, would be to make sure that Chavis Pool be a part of that community, because it is the center of southeast Raleigh, where all of us used to gather as children to go to attend, to enjoy some type of water in the summer. So, that's my concern, as well as opening up Lyons Park to make sure we have a place for our children. To be, and the budget, I know it's already a plan in place for some of these things, but I just want to make sure that y'all, make sure y'all don't forget about it, and that it comes back to, I want these things to be pushed up just as much as these tall buildings down here. We see those first, but the people in our community need to see that stuff revitalized and being able to be a place for them to go and enjoy their own family.
Alright, thank you. And an update on Lyons Park.
Lyons Park.
The center should be reopening hopefully within the next thirty to sixty days.
Yeah, but it was supposed to be open already.
Right.
Thank you.
I would like to say that most of our parks projects are funded through bonds, and we should be pursuing a bond possibly next year, so we will definitely keep that on the list.
Right, but that money has also been in place since 2014 as well, and it has not been completed. So, why haven't it been completed? Why can't we enjoy our life in the pool in the summer, just like our white counterparts?
Understood.
Thank you.
My name is Barbara Smalley McMahon, and I live at 602 North Ludworth Street. And I'm here to support every black person who has gotten up and spoken tonight. The reason I'm saying that across the board, whether it's housing, policing, access to recreational facilities, is because we live in a society built by white power for the benefit of white privilege and power. It's not that we have terrible police officers. We have a system that's built on systemic racism. In 2013, I took a course on dismantling racism. It absolutely broke my heart to find out that when people finally got freed from slavery, we set up a criminal justice system to throw them back in prison at the drop of a hat. There was actually laws on the books that said in municipalities, if a black man was caught talking too loudly in the presence of a white woman, he could be thrown in jail and shipped back out to the plantation so that white privilege and power could stay in place. I have recently, as a minister, been leading a book club for other clergy in Raleigh. We have been reading a book by Joseph Barnett. I want all of you to get it. It's called Becoming an Anti-Racist Church. I want you to become an anti-racist council. You're not. I have listened to you talk about what's happened to the city of Raleigh. I can look at it. It's happened in my neighborhood. I've seen one affordable housing area around me after another crumble because of white privilege and power. Joseph Barnett talks about accountability to the people who are affected by racism as the only cure there is for racism. You have to be accountable to the people that have been impacted by racism. I don't see it. I'm white. It hasn't hurt me. I have to listen to my black friends. I have to listen to my black mentors, my black teachers that teach me what racism looks like in this city. You do too. If you are listening to white privilege and power, I do not want you back on the board when we vote next poll, and I will be working to get you off this board.
Thank you. Again, anyone else to speak on the budget?
That was about the budget.
No, I'm just making a statement.
Good evening, council members. I live at 1104 Sudbury Court in Raleigh, and I'm a senior at Sanderson High School. In education, we talk a lot about leadership, and I've found the clearest way our leaders on the city council can show that they have listened to the people who elected them is through a budget that reflects the wishes of the community. Funding the requests of the people for accountability and oversight for words and actions is how you can show that this is a city that works for all. And so, a budget sits before you, and the people wait. We wait because it is your funding that can give us what we want. Power is a privilege that you all have, and with it comes responsibility. You have a responsibility to speak and to act in accordance with the way that this city speaks and acts. And this city has been pretty clear in its words and actions. We want accountability. We want oversight. We want action. We require these things because we require life, and this city will soon have a reckoning with the black and brown bodies that too often leaves in our streets. Too often do we see people of color brutalized without a word from our leaders. I'll say that again. Too often do we see people of color brutalized without a word from our leaders. Too often do we see the wringing of elected hands. The community has spoken and protested through seasons of deliberation. Summer is here, but even as the seasons change, our requests do not. We want accountability. We want oversight. We want action. Cries of tied hands fall flat these days. Political calculations do not matter. Nor do the constant calls of "Give it time." We do not have time, so speak out, act, do something. This city can and should enact a community oversight board for its police force. Allow the people to work with and through the police to change our force for the better. We can and must move toward automatic holster-activated body cameras for officers, because the people deserve to know and witness every single time a weapon is placed in an open palm. We can and must train each of our officers, each and every one of our officers that interact with the community in crisis intervention training, because every officer serves this community. The lives of people in this city cannot wait. We cannot wait. Please fund what we ask. Fund crisis training and body cameras and oversight, because there is no greater negligence than inaction. I'll say that again. There is no greater negligence than inaction. We want accountability. We want oversight. All we want is action. Mr. Thompson? Mr. Thompson? We want accountability. We want oversight. We want to be listened to. We want action. Thank you all so much for this opportunity to speak on the budget.
Thank you.
Dicky, wake up.
Next. Anyone else? Is that, I counted. Is that, I counted-
Still working.
All right.
Is Dicky awake yet? We don't have everybody.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes, Serena Johnson, 3730 National Drive. And I just wanted to speak on activities and being proactive and programs that prevent the distrust within the community in law enforcement. And I don't know, I don't see too many things in a budget that speaks on an initiative to do something as far as engagement with the community to strengthen those relations. So, I'm just asking that the board do as necessary to make an actual change in the community and not just with the oversight, but actually with activities that's going to prevent all the distrust, all of the actions of the resources not being available in the community for them to act on things that needs to be done. And also with what's been introduced to the council from Human Relations Commission. I have issue with knowing that they presented information to be presented to you guys and it was not reached to you. So, who is actually running the city council? Is it staff or is it you guys? Who's going to make a decision on what the budget's going to look like? Is it staff making the decision or you guys making the decision? Because I've been pretty upset the past couple of years coming to city council meetings with you guys and maybe you're not the ones that I'm supposed to be upset with. So, who's doing what and why? Are you guys allowing it to happen if you're elected to uplift what the citizens want? So, what is your position? I need to know what is your position on what was presented to you from Human Relations and the fact that staff made a decision to mute them? What are you guys doing about it? Because I haven't heard any comments about what you feel about information being presented to you guys that's been halted and why is it being halted? Who's running this?
We actually discussed this this afternoon-
Yes, ma'am.
And we'll be bringing that back in July to make a decision.
Yes. So, you guys are going to be discussing this again in July?
Yes.
And after the budget is already made, decisions are already made?
Well, it won't matter if, about the budget as far as being able to hear from the boards and commissions.
So, those decisions as far as the human relations is concerned, is it going to be uplifted in any way?
We are discussing it, yes.
So, everything is still a discussion after being discussed for years now? Then that's the problem because there's no actions being done. Everything has been another meeting, another discussion, another roundtable for what? So, clearly you guys aren't running this.
But we made a motion this afternoon to look into this, so we are looking into it and seeing how we can facilitate that.
Can you guys present as a chain of command? Can you guys do that so we can be clear on who's in charge? So, whenever we do have questions and concerns, we know who to address. Can that be done?
You're doing it right now.
Thank you.
Clearly not.
My name is Stephanie Lorman. I live at 2704 Ramsey Road and I am here to talk about the budget. I have lots of comments about the budget, but I only have three minutes. But first, I want to offer up my thanks to Ms. Octavia Raney because it is the public comments in the back of all of these plans going back to the 60s that led me to the understanding that I have now, which is that y'all have been full of crap for a really long time. In your bu-
No, we'll show you respect. You need to show this council respect.
In your budget, you were asleep two people ago.
I'm not asleep, ma'am.
You were asleep two people ago.
Not at all.
In the budget, you talk about that you're going to increase the living wage from $30,340 to $32,390. Here's what's hilarious about that and when I say hilarious, I don't actually mean funny because $34,000 a year is not actually a living wage. It puts them below 50% of the AMI, which is not what the affordable housing you're building is. You're building affordable housing to people that are 60% to 80% of the AMI. Race is not equally distributed across income levels, which means you are using tax money and tax increases that everyone pays, including the poor, to build housing for my people because we want to be downtown now. We did not want to be downtown in the 70s and we bailed, which is why that land was so cheap. It is why Mr. Thompson's family could develop walnut terrace. And that is why we stand here today and we ask you to be specific about these federal rules that you are talking about. And I personally plan hard to work hard to not have an affordable housing bond because it's not fair that you keep building housing for people like me when the people that make 50% and below the AMI also pay taxes and are the most housing cost burden in this city. Hipsters moving downtown to ride scooters are not a crucial target population for housing. That's right.
Thank you. One more gentleman?
My name is Faisal Khan, part of Carolina Peace Center. Council members, we are a part of a coalition of eight organizations and we are continuing to grow and I can assure you, we're going to continue to grow. This is in regards to the, our demands in regards to the Raleigh Police Department going through CIT training, crisis intervention training. We're also demanding racial equity classes and programs for the Raleigh Police Department. Not only demanding it, but we want this to make it mandatory. And it's time that there's budget and funding allocated for these programs and they're made mandatory. Across the board, we're seeing in this country, at academic institutions and at the office corporate level, they're going through various equity training because we do realize that there is institutionalized racism, that there is structured racism. There's no question about that. America's changing. America colors are changing. My color is going to become a majority in this country. Black color and brown color is going to become a majority, but the point here is, it's not about color here. It's about that people need to understand what people of color, what challenges they go through. So, it's important that we, as a city, work together. You are elected council members, elected by the people, for the people. Your job here is to serve the people. You're public servants. You're not kings, you're not queens. This is not authoritarian regime, as far as I know. It's a democratic process. So, I urge that funding must be provided so that every Raleigh police officer that interacts with the community be, becomes CIT, crisis intervention training, excuse me. It has been proven that CIT training de-escalates conflict. It's not only in the interest of the community, but it's also in the interest of the police department and officers. It's also understand that we go through this racial equity training so people at the Raleigh Police Department understand from the structural standpoint, institutionalized standpoint, that there is systematic racism in our country. And I don't have to say anything. We can see what's going on with the last two years in this country. You have to be rocket scientists to understand that. So, I'm going to end here. I have a lot to say, but only have three minutes. It takes a village to raise a child, is the saying. It's going to take an entire city to make it more safer. Safer for everybody. Safer for black people, safer for colored people, safer for white people, safer for everybody. So, I urge the board, council, the police, allocate funding for CIT training and racial equity training. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Was that everyone?
Just have one more comment before I head out and I'll try and tie it to the budget because I know my time did go up. I just wanted to say, as a student, and I tried to be quiet in the audience when others were speaking, it's just, I'm going to try and keep it together here. It's really upsetting when people on the council are looking around, looking down and youth are coming here. I'm trying to speak for my brothers and sisters that are young, that want to get involved and we're not being listened to at all. And now, members are trying to interrupt Mayor Protem and the members weren't listening to me the first time.
Mr. Webb, thank you. All right, I believe for the budget?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I counted seven earlier in the number key. Is there anyone else after this gentleman that would like to speak? All right, last two, yeah, I see Ms. Marcherian, last two.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Matthew Cooper. I'm the president of the Raleigh Police Protective Association, a group that represents nearly 500 sworn Raleigh police officers, many of whom are rank-and-file employees. We, as taxpayers, acknowledge the challenge of formulating a budget that does not include a raise in taxes. We also acknowledge and are appreciative of the increased involvement we are afforded in this latest process. The input and participation of rank-and-file employees is important and necessary for a healthy organization. We would like a stronger commitment from the city moving forward to prioritize pay compensation for its first responders. The strategy, this strategy will prevent a repeat of the failures of the last several years. We look forward to continue to work together with the city to provide better pay and benefits to its employees. In response to the recent criticism of our officers, I leave you with this quote attributed to Theodore Roosevelt. "It is not the critic who counts, not the man who points out how the strong man stumbles or where the doer of deeds could have done better. The credit belongs to the man who is actually in the arena, whose face is marred by dust and sweat and blood, who strives valiantly, who airs, who comes up short again and again, who spends himself in a worthy cause, who at his best knows in the end the triumph of high achievement, and who at its worst, as is worse, if he fails or at least fails while daring greatly, so that his place shall never be with those cold and timid souls who never know victory nor defeat." Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Marcherian?
Good afternoon, council. Kimberly McTarian, 4224 Crowfield Drive, Raleigh. Mayor Protem, you did mention that you wanted to hear something about the budget and the budget is numbers with the agenda of what is important to the people. And I'm standing here because I believe that we are a valuable people, but we have been devalued and the money has not followed our issues. And that is why we are suffering at the hands of a city that have displaced us and replaced us in various areas. We're asking that the budget reflects the needs of our people, not just in policing, but prevention. We asked last year, Kay, and thank you for responding. We asked about the monies that we receive from illegal substance because no one talks about crack. We're all focused on opiate addiction. And it is my, to my understanding, that the IRS of the state, the state revenue, returns 75% of that money back to your city. What are you all doing with the money and the budget? Where's that line item, I'm asking again, in 2019? Where's that line item and how is it being returned back into our community for prevention? We have young men out there who've never had a job, but you're sending, they are graduating to federal prisons. And I don't see anybody, while we're talking about scooters and building Dick's Park, why are we not building the people? Because the people are the value. And if you can build the people, you can keep the property. But our people are broken and they are policed and they are arrested and they are killed. So, let's not talk about gun violence, just talk about economic violence. Let's talk about housing violence when you don't have a place to stay. And our children are being suspended. They're joining gangs because they don't have any value. And I think that's not what's talked about. We're talking about the end, but we should be talking about the beginning. And the beginning starts at how this country was created. We're still at the bottom. An attorney, we're looking for some laws that will protect us. Do you mind helping protecting us and providing some laws? That's what laws do. They protect other people. And instead of protecting personnel, let's protect the people that we said that we're here to serve. You can't protect the police department and not protect the people. We are open book. What about your police officers? They belong to us. They serve and protect. They can come in our house, kill, they can take us out, but we do not have any say-so. And we're looking for some transparency there. Do you have the transparency, Mr. Ruffin? We're looking for a city manager that does not manage people, but they help those people. Now, that's property management because we're no longer property, remember? We like to stay in our property. And yes, the abortion issue is real, but even more so, we're getting killed by more guns than abortion.
Thank you. So, I'm going to ask staff to bring back just notes from this and things that we'll discuss at our meeting on Monday. Next, we have a petition-
Could we get an accounting of any monies that we get regarding illegal drugs and whether or not we can use that money for the benefit of the community?
We can provide you information on that, yes.
Petition andization. So, we have petition andization, 1214 Bethel Road and 4418 Martha Street.
Mr. Protem, you may want to see if there's folks here for that. Otherwise, we have a presentation, but you may want to see if you need one.
Before I do that, I do want to take the time to recognize our scouts who are here. Thank you all for coming out and hopefully you've learned some things tonight that you can definitely go back and discuss and help move the city forward. So, thank you for being here. All right. Is there anyone here to speak on the petition andization? I'm going to open the hearing at this time. I will close the hearing.
Motion to approve.
Second. Been moved and properly second to approve this petition. Fanization, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, have a stand right, motion carries.
Hold on a minute, Cory. Did they shut the doors?
All right, we'll now go to rezoning Z119.
I just showed you everything on rewind. We can go home now, right? This is a request to rezone a little bit over 12 acres from R4 to R10 with conditions. These are addresses, unassigned addresses on Holly Lane, some unassigned address on Holly Lane and Mid Lakes Drive and then also parcels on Blue Ridge Road. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map and your planning, the planning commission and the Northwest CIC both recommend approval. So, you can see the property here is a low-density residential zoning on the future land, low-density residential designation on the future land use map. There's also public parks and open space designation across the property adjacent to some moderate density designation. You also see medium density on the page and regional mixed use as well. So, this is just outside the Belt Line, not too far from Crabtree Valley Mall. You discussed a case here last year, a rezoning around a rest home and a rezoning case that you approved not too long ago is now under construction adjacent with multifamily apartments. This particular property is not located within the corporate limits of the city. It's in the ETJ. Annexation would be required for extension of service subsequently, but that matters not before you tonight. The capital area greenway master plan indicates a crossing on this property and the conditions that we'll discuss later, you'll see will specify a pedestrian access across the rear of the site proximate to the sanitary sewer that would provide adequate easement right-of-way for development of a greenway in the future. There's a view of the site from Blue Ridge, so remember you have that little tongue that pokes up to Blue Ridge that's not the total width of the site, so that's what that looks like. And then the other view of that looking northeast and then the view of Holly Lane from Blue Ridge. So, there are a couple of conditions here. Density no greater than seven units an acre. Handful of uses are prohibited, apartments, boarding house, daycare. There's a landscape buffer specified. I'm going to go back to the map. It's easier to understand in this area. And then the lighting is also specified to be directed away from those two parcel, those two outlying parcels on Blue Ridge. A requirement for tree conservation or open space. A requirement for tree conservation or open space, the greenway easement that I mentioned previously, and then some required street improvements for Holly Lane, Mid Lakes, and Stony Crest required as part of the first phase of development. But does not apply to, and I'm going to show you another map, so they're saying these portions of right-of-way would be developed. They're leaving out this piece, so the right-of-way forks back here, so Stony Crest forks, and so they're saying they're only going to do part of that, and then they're not going to do necessarily this configuration of right-of-way within the site. So they have to provide access internal to the site, but it doesn't have to be in this particular configuration. The big shift in entitlement here is in terms of number of units. They're going from forty-nine to eighty-six. Again, your future land use map here, low-density residential, the seven acres per acre with open space set aside is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and the urban form map designation here is not relevant to the case at hand. You have predominantly consistent policies, and you're, again, the planning commission and the Northwest CAC recommend approval. What questions can I answer for you about this particular case?
What about Stormwater? This came up, you know, there's a big apartment complex beside this one. I guess it was last year, within the last eighteen months, we had flooding at Crabtree Valley. So what, could you give us some description about what's being done for Stormwater here?
I'm going to have to pull up the staff report and look at that. I don't know if Stormwater staff is here tonight and cares to speak. They're here. Great. You want to talk about that?
Yes, there will be a hundred-year flood evaluation required. There will be a hundred-year flood evaluation required along with the plan submitted for this project because of the length of the water course in the vicinity of the proposed development. So that will be looked at, sir, and have to be met. That requirement have to be met based on the findings of that study.
So do you feel like, I know you haven't done your study yet, but will any of this be retained on site?
I'm sorry, could you repeat?
Will any of it be retained on site?
Well, they will have to meet the two and ten-year requirements, of course. Whether there's an additional requirement for a hundred-year will depend on the results of the study, sir.
I'm not sure I understand, what will the study determine?
The study will determine if development of this would require or cause any additional flooding downstream, especially in the Crabtree Valley Mall area. May or may not, depending on the study. In some cases, actually, being so close to the flood plain, you do not want to retain it more. So, in fact, we have found that in other similar cases.
But when you talk about a hundred-year flood study, that obviously you're trying to analyze this site for a very intense flood situation. You're just saying that because of its proximity to the Crabtree Creek, it may not lead to large amounts of detention.
Correct, correct. They would have to meet the two and ten, which is already a requirement.
Okay. Any more questions? All right, at this time, we will open the hearing. The eight minutes per side for all zoning cases. Anyone here for this project?
Good evening, Mayor Protem Branch, members of council, Michael Birch here on behalf of the property owner and applicant. Appreciate Bynum's staff report. She covered a lot of the key topics. The purpose of this rezoning is to allow for a townhome community, which we think is an appropriate transition from the apartments that are under construction, and certainly the more dense you get towards Crabtree Valley Mall, towards the condos and lower-density there to our southwest. We have worked with the folks in the condos, neighbors along Mid Lakes Drive here, Pinnacle Apartments as well, and have incorporated zoning conditions to address their comments. I would note, as Bynum did, that this case is consistent with the future land use map, consistent with the comprehensive plan, compatible with the surrounding area, and reasonable and in the public interest. Again, providing that transition in density, locating an appropriate amount of density in close proximity to goods and services at Crabtree Valley Mall, as well as the employment area at Glen Lake, not far away as well. And also providing additional housing options in this area. Again, townhomes, newer townhomes is not something that there are much of in this area. It's mostly been the higher-density apartments close by. I will note that throughout the case, there was conversation about street improvements and enhancing connectivity in the area, and that is something that this case will do by improving Mid Lakes, Holly Lane, as well as either, and working with staff to improve or pay a fee in lieu for Stony Crest to one day provide better connections off of Blue Ridge Road to connect future Crabtree Valley Avenue with this portion of Blue Ridge Road. But it really will take redevelopment of this site to enhance that connectivity. And we-
Where's Stony Crest?
So Stony Crest is an unimproved right-of-way here, and I think Bynum had a, so, Blue Ridge Road is here on the right-hand side. This is Holly Lane, which we'll be improving all the way. Stony Crest is unimproved right-of-way. The adjacent apartment complex, dedicated, kind of this swing into the Pinnacle Apartment Site, there's not anything, you know, receiving it on the other end now, but we'll be dedicating some additional right-of-way, and also, again, improving or paying a fee in lieu for the improvement of Stony Crest Road. So that's something that everyone we spoke to in the surrounding area had an interest in, and we've added conditions to require that to be done as a part of our first phase of development. And hopefully you received the letter of support from one of our neighbors, Mr. Irv Pierce and his wife, earlier today. So we had a unanimous CAC recommendation for approval, and same from Planning Commission, but-
I have a question, looking at one of the maps. Is this site property currently outside of the city limits?
So it's outside of the corporate limits, but it's within the ETJ.
Right, correct. So as far as water and sewer, will you be petition, for the sewer piece, will you be petitioning to bring into the city limits?
Yes, so we will go through, kind of after the rezoning, we would go through the site plan or subdivision phase, and then we'd have to also annex. So we would be served by, assuming approval of annexation, we would have city services. And there is utilities in the area.
Okay. So, but you haven't started the annexation process yet?
Correct. For property that's within the ETJ, that's usually done towards the end after the preliminary subdivision or plan.
Hmm, nah. I've seen it, the annexation before rezonings.
Those are for properties that are outside of the-
Within the ETJ, because it's been happening in my district down Rock Creek Road for the last three years.
Okay, I know annexation is required when we file something for when there's property in the county, and we've certainly done that in and around your district for property in the ETJ. We typically don't see it because annexation, usually when you have a landowner, they don't want annexation to occur until after the development plan is in place. But there are utilities, given all the development around the site, there are utilities available there.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, can I, just curious about this future street connection. I don't really see it on iMaps. Is anyone?
So it's existing, existing right-of-way, Mid Lakes is about, I believe, a sixty-foot-
But it looks like the property that it would connect to is already built out with not really any ability to make that connection.
No, so that is the Pinnacle Apartments, currently zoned R6 with a relatively older apartment complex there.
Would be a redevelopment.
That's correct, right. They, we had lots of discussion with them. Y'all may remember when the site plan for on the other side of Crabtree Valley Avenue was coming through, the Pinnacle Apartment owners were very focused on having that access.
Just want to hear staff say that, yes, the, your street, stuff of Stony Crest Road will be connected when that other apartment development is, redevelopment is-
Hold the tile.
Built.
Stop the tile.
Is that a true statement?
They have an obliga, oh, it's loud today. They have an obligation to, as he stated, either build it or pay a fee in lieu for that. That, the right-of-way existed on, from, probably dedicated from this property, kind of along this alignment here, if you look back at old plot maps. And this development here, the apartments that are currently under construction, had this little triangular flag there that went behind it, and they dedicated this right-of-way to curve it towards those Pinnacle Apartments as a part of that site plan, and I would presume they paid a fee in lieu, I haven't seen the records of that. It's, I've been in at least one meeting with representatives of the Pinnacle Apartments who desire that connection, and they want to be able to have that access. It's required of the subdivision of this land to meet that obligation. The condition that was offered is intended to make sure that all of this obligation is met in the first phase, and so what can happen, and sometimes, is somebody has a piece of property, they build some homes here, and they have a second phase of subdivision here, and they only do improvements from the first phase forward. Their obligation based on that condition would be the entire thing. It is not necessarily in the city's interest to have a street constructed that dead-ends into the woods.
That's why I'm asking, would the other redevelopment of adjacent parcels require that connection to be made?
Yes, if this were redeveloped here, there would be a, of course, I, I'm sorry, I misunderstood the question. There would be a corresponding street required to meet block perimeter that would then have to line up with this right-of-way. I apologize, I didn't understand the question.
All right. Appreciate it.
Anything else, or anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this rezoning? Okay. Anyone here to speak against and opposition of this rezoning? All right, I close the public hearing and bring it back to the table. Counselors, comments, questions?
This is in my district, and I've met with the applicant, and I also met with staff to talk about the concerns about the street, and I was satisfied that we don't want to require, you know, a stub of a street to be built that, you know, doesn't go anywhere for a really long time. So I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June 4th, 2019, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment.
I've been moved and properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those against have a say right. Motion carries. All right. Rezoning Z519.
This is a request to rezone not quite twenty-three acres from R4 to IX3 with conditions. It is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. The planning commission and the Northwest CAC both recommend approval. You may remember this from a comp plan, a comprehensive plan amendment that we looked at not too long ago that changed the future land use map designation here. So your existing zoning, again, R4 surrounded on the, and this is Glenwood Avenue, Brownley and Triangle Drive, surrounded on all sides, on the north by industrial, either heavy industrial or industrial mixed-use zoning, and then on the south side, that similar combination of R4 and also industrial mixed-use. You have an airport overlay going back this way towards the airport, and then the Metro Park Overlay District, which references Amstead Park, is also present here. So you can see, clearly see Amstead State Park here, and that comprehensive plan amendment that I referenced earlier, CP218, changed the land use map designation on this side and this side. So this piece on the south side became low-density residential, while on the north side became business and commercial services. So it really set the stage for this rezoning. You can see there's a fair amount of commercial on the north side of Glenwood Avenue here, and also some multifamily residential. So again, just a reminder, that public parks and open space designation on the south side of Glenwood and the business and commercial services on the north side. Here's a view of the site from Glenwood Avenue looking south back towards town, a similar view looking north or out, what I think of as, what you might think of as west if you're on Glenwood Avenue headed towards Durham. The conditions here specify a tree conservation, the depth of the tree conservation area along Glenwood Avenue, limit the residential use to multi-unit living only, prohibits a handful of uses, adult establishment, pawn shop, waste-related services, prisons, helipad airstrip, and then limits the height of your telecommunication tower and the total size of your warehouse and distribution to no more than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet. Specify site lighting at the right-of-way line. The change here, your residential density is increasing significantly, and you're also increasing the maximum potential of office, retailer, industrial. Remember that the way this chart works, you can't have all those things. This is the maximum if you single-shot at any one of them. Future land use map here is consistent, and there's no urban form map designation. So again, your planning commission and your CAC are recommending approval, and it is consistent with the plan. What questions can I answer about the case?
Questions? All right. At this time, we'll open the hearing. Again, eight minutes per side. Anyone here to speak for the project?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. David Brown, Withers, Ravenel. I'm here tonight with the property owner and partner in this project, Eric Moore with the State of North Carolina Department of Administration, Michael Anderson, Anderson Automotive Group, Eric Vernon, our attorney with Wyrick Robbins, and my colleague Ryan Fisher, civil engineer and project manager. Bynum did a very good and thorough job outlining the case. We just have a couple of quick comments. We have a positive and unanimous recommendation or endorsement from the planning commission for this case. We also have the same from the Amstead Northwest CAC. To the best of our knowledge, there are no outstanding items in the staff report, and this request is compatible with the adjoining area and surrounding properties, and the request is consistent with the city's overall comprehensive plan and the future land use map. Many of you are very much aware of this project. A couple of reminders from our comp plan revision last year. This is a joint venture between Anderson Automotive and the State of North Carolina. It's a land swap, as Bynum outlined. Just very quickly, the state will convey the Amstead parcel that we're talking about tonight. That's about twenty-three acres in this swap. The state will remove the Amstead parcel from the state nature and historic preserve from the state park system. And the state will work with Anderson on the site plans for the Triangle Drive extension. I think also very powerfully, the commitments that Anderson has in this land swap is to convey the thirteen acres on the south side of Glenwood Avenue back to the state to become part of Amstead Park. Dedicate right-of-way on the south side of Glenwood Avenue for Triangle Drive extension. Demolish the former original mattress factory building. This area is proposed for what we call an after-hours, or say we call it a park and hike lot, car lot, so that if you want to park your car, you might stay in the park a little longer if you don't get locked in overnight. And I think very powerful for the city of Raleigh, for everybody, construct Triangle Drive, south of Glenwood Avenue, so that it connects to the future driveway coming out of the park. There are eight-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand visitors to the Glenwood entrance of this park every year. They're exiting and entering the property without benefit of a signal on a street that the city has classified as a six-lane avenue divided, plus forty thousand cars a day on that road. The last item, the commitment, is to pay into a fund two million dollars for parkland purchase at the discretion of the State of North Carolina. Try to be brief tonight. We may save a little bit of time. If we have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them. There may be others who also wish to speak.
Any others speak for this project?
Thank you for your time and attention. I am Dr. David Humphrey. I reside at 108 Silver Ridge Court in Cary. I'm a board member on the Amstead Coalition. The Amstead Coalition has been working with the applicant and supports this proposed rezoning with one exception. We would request a modification in the proposed zoning conditions related to warehouse and distribution facilities to limit high-volume truck traffic. The applicant's proposed condition prohibits warehouse and distribution facilities greater than two-hundred-and-fifty thousand square feet per individual building. than 250,000 square feet per individual building. That could, that condition could still support a large distribution or truck facility, which is what we're trying to work against here. The rezoning is one of the final steps in completing a land exchange that was just described that will enable a safe left-in, left-in, right-in access to William B. Olmsted State Park at Triangle Drive, and this will work even after the widening of US 70, also known as Glenwood Avenue. The property being proposed for rezoning only has access to Glenwood Avenue, and it will remain adjacent to William B. Olmsted State Park. As such, we would like to ensure compatible transition between the state park and the industrial area just to the north of it. We support all the other proposed conditions, especially the increased vegetation buffer of 32 feet, of a 32-feet minimum instead of the UDO's standard 20-foot minimum. However, we request that the proposed zoning conditions be amended concerning warehouse and distribution facilities to limit high-volume truck traffic. We're concerned about heavy truck traffic in close proximity to our park. The Olmsted Coalition looks forward to working with the Raleigh City Council on this important opportunity.
I have one question for you, when you say truck traffic, are you also including, because I'm assuming this is a car dealership, are you including trucks that bring in the cars?
That, that has not been determined.
Well, I'm just, if, it, it has the possibility to be a-
It could be, yes.
Right, so if it were a car dealership, would that, would your requests impact the trucks that bring in those cars?
If it were a car facility, we would have no objections to the trucks bringing in those cars.
Okay, all right. Okay.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else here to speak for this? All right, anyone here to speak against this? All right, with that, I'll bring it back to the council.
So I'd like to, you know, I think this is a good deal for everybody here, because y'all worked really hard to make this work for the state. It's, it's a good deal for the park, and they're getting extra money, yeah, I think, so I'd like to move for the adoption of proposed consistency statement dated June the 4th, 2019, containing the agenda materials and to approve the zoning amendment.
I'll second that with one caveat, it has the same address as Olmsted Park, so let's not make sure we don't inadvertently rezone Olmsted Park.
I agree.
All right, it's been moved in properly second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those against have to say a rite, motion passes. Thank you. All right, Z 919.
This is a request to rezone, just about six acres from R6 to neighborhood mixed-use, three-story height limit with conditions. The request is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the future land use map. The planning commission and the southeast CAC both recommend approval. You can see the existing zoning configuration on the slide before you now, so you can see the hot, uh, site here is currently R6, and there's R6 to the north, to the east, west, and south. You have a combination of commercial mixed-use and office mixed-use, and then down at the corner of the south side of Pool Road, you have also some neighborhood mixed-use in addition to commercial mixed-use and office mixed-use. So a zoomed-out view to help you understand where we are, we're northeast of the Sunnybrook-Pool Road intersection between Sunnybrook and Interstate 87, not too far from Oakview Park and Walnut Creek Park. And then just a closer-in view of the site, you can see just the blend of development here, so you have townhouses to the north, some single-family to the west, and fire department and church down on Pool Road. Another look at the site from the air. This is basically at the, sort of the dead end, tail end of Samuel Street, so looking from Williams Street at Pool, at the site, again, looking at the site at the end of Williams. A couple of conditions here, they've limited use to multi-unit living and have prohibited detached house, attached house, a couple of other types there, and then the residential density is limited to 50 dwelling units. The change in entitlement here increases the number of residential units from 35 to 50 potential, and increases the maximum building square footage. Consistent with the neighborhood, neighborhood mixed-use designation on the future land use map, no designation on the urban form map for consideration, consistent overall with the fut- with the plan, including the future land use map, and no inconsistent policies were identified. Again, recommended for approval by the planning commission and the CAC. What questions can I answer for you about the case?
I just have one question, if they had not limited to 50 units, how many residential units could they have done by right with this zoning?
It would be limited by basically how they would park it, so that three-story height limit and what they could park it.
Would limit the number of units?
Yeah. Six acres, I think they could probably get a good many more than 50 units.
Okay, okay, all right. Any other questions from council staff? Seeing none, we'll now open the hearing. Anyone here to speak in favor of this project?
Good evening, Mayor Protem, members of the council. Pam Porter with TMT LA Associates. We are working with Starlight Homes to work on this rezoning that you are about, you're about to hopefully vote on. I'm glad you asked Bynum that question, because I was not prepared to answer that, but I do believe it would be quite a few more, and the reason we limited it to 50 was because with all the other things that we are required to provide, stormwater, tree conservation area, parking, there wasn't a whole lot of room to add many more units.
Okay. Any other questions? I've been to, I met with the group, multiple meetings on this project, and I think you all have done a good job of working with the community and the district, and N-S, I think, is a good transition from C-S towards the other residential that's in that area, and there's a creek too that goes through there that I think you're working around. So those are my thoughts there. Is there anyone else to speak for this, in favor of this project? Okay, seeing none, anyone here to speak in opposition of this project? All right, seeing none, I'm, bring this back to council.
I'll move for approval.
All right, I second the motion you move, I'm assuming you move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June 4th, 2019, containing the agenda materials, and to approve the zoning amendment?
Thank you, Mr. Branch, yes.
You're doing so good.
I lost my place, so thank you.
All right, all in favor say aye. Those against say a rite, motion carries. All right, we have Z 3618.
Right, this is on West Martin Street, this is a request to rezone, just under an acre from DX5 with shop front frontage to DX12 with shop front frontage, and conditions, the planning commission and the central CAC both recommend approval here, and you can see we are in a sea of DX zoning here, so you and I are right here, right? And the case in question is down here on the south side of Martin Street between Dawson and Commerce Place. So an aerial view of that, you can see Nash Square here, just to the northeast of the site, and you can see that this project, this request encompasses several storefront buildings, the surface parking behind them, and a access that goes through to, oh shoot, Davie, thank you, sorry about that. Lots of commercial around heavily mixed-use, Raleigh, Raleigh Union Station and Convention Center are also visible on the map as well as the railroad. And here's a view looking along West Street to, towards the west, I'm sorry, West Martin Street towards the west, and then another view looking east on Martin Street at the, just looking, looking east there, and then a view looking north along Commerce Place, you can see that access point that goes back to Davie. Again, a view looking north on South Dawson Street. So the change here, the significant increase in residential density and an increase in your office intensity that's permitted, based on the increase in height that they're requesting, this is consistent with the future land use and the urban form map, although that is not the future land use map, I don't think, because it has zoning all over it. Go figure. The, all right, a number of conditions proposed here, requires national register contributing structures to remain, does allow for removal of those structures in the event of disaster, but puts conditions upon their replace, replacement, limits height to five stories in the area of the existing structures, and requires covenant to be recorded, for new construction above the existing buildings to be reviewed by the RHTC Certificate of Appropriateness Committee, requires, makes specifications about materials for new construction that's visible from the right-of-way, that they have to be consistent with the district and the historic structures, prohibits a handful of uses, social service, adult entertainment, and pawn shop, self-service storage, vehicle repair, requires a dogway station, and requires that 50% of the outdoor amenity area be open to the public, as well as screening of structured parking. I don't want to talk about that if I don't have to. The planning commission had a lot of questions about it. The Depot Historic District, this is located in that and is considered contributing, although that's a national register district, not a local district. This is overall consistent with the comprehensive plan, including the future land use map and the urban form map, and your, oh, there's, that's where that slide was, and the planning commission and the CAC both recommend approval. Can I answer questions for you about the case?
Could you describe the inconsistent policies or why the project would be inconsistent with those?
I think generally the concern there is about the, so you're inconsistent with your downtown West Gateway area plan policy, so they're looking for zoning consistency with the downtown West Gateway plan, which takes precedent over the future land use map, and they're asking for more height than is indicated by downtown West Gateway.
So that's LU 51 that you're referring to?
Yes, that's the last one on the list, yep. And then I'd like to look at the other two. So it looks like the staff report and the slide are not consistent, I believe that the staff report is correct. This case has been modified several times, and it looks like that, unless I'm missing something, the reinforcing the urban pattern and the scale and design of new commercial mixed-use, oh no, here we go. Nope, it looks like based on conditions submitted late in the life of the case, those items have flipped to consistent, based on the staff, oh no, I'm sorry, I'm misreading this, I apologize. There, so reinforcing the urban pattern, the height even with conditions is inconsistent with the district, and that's the issue with both of those, with the reinforcing the urban pattern and the scale and design, it's both about, both of them about height.
Bynum, can you talk about where the planning commission was concerned about the parking, the screening of the parking?
Why they were?
Yeah, could you talk a little bit about that?
Not specifically.
Okay.
No, but that was offered by the applicant.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? We're now open the hearing, for those in favor of this project can come forward.
Members of the council, thank you for having me. You all have a, have had a long day, and I'll try to be quick. I speak on behalf, my name's Thomas Sayer, and I speak on behalf of my wife Joan Ellen Deck, my closest neighbor, Mary Ann Howard, and her husband Steve Schuster. Joan Ellen and I have been here, the four of us bought this property in 1989, and then had the audacity to move in and live there since. We've raised two daughters, one of whom has returned to Raleigh, and she is 29, so that gives you a little bit of sense of how long we've been there. We've gone from our neighbors being homeless folks and male prostitutes to trolley pubs. We've spanned from, from parents hesitantly handing over their kids to us on the loading dock for middle school sleepovers, to a second-line band playing under our bedroom window on Commerce Place. A lot has changed, and in a way, this project embodies that change. Unfortunately, Steve Schuster has lost his voice, so you have a less articulate member of the pair who started Clearscapes over 35 years ago. We've had the privilege to be working in downtown Raleigh ever since. We've had the unique opportunity to influence how our town has unfolded, and, and that has been like this project, a dance, a process of balancing, balancing old and new, big and tall, and small and humble, loud and quiet, dense and open, public and private. All along, we've tried to move the sliders to make this balance happen, to the greatest benefit of the most people. That is what Marbles, the Convention Center, Union Station, the Shimmer Wall, Junction West, the Montague Building, the Raleigh Police Memorial, and many more have all been about. What they have in common is the sensitive balancing of seemingly opposing forces. And this project before you is the same. We are taking the density which by right we can achieve, and the density which downtown Raleigh must achieve, and reallocating it to a taller structure to occupy the interior of the block on surface parking in order to forever preserve the structure and use of the historic two-story buildings on Martin Street. We are proposing to preserve the quirky alley space which has become one of the most photographed public spaces in Raleigh, and capture that tradition into truly public space, internally connecting Martin and Commerce Streets. With the preservation of the here's, here's heroic, historic structures of old downtown, we imagine a contemporary structure that speaks to the new, to the hip, to the growing future of Raleigh. In your packet in painstaking detail is a record of the conversations which have ensued over the almost 12 meetings and countless conversations starting last fall, and I would like to characterize the spirit of those conversations. They have been overwhelmingly supportive, and you've seen the vote, CAC nine to two, Historic Commission ten to two, Planning Commission eight to one. Yes, as you can imagine, there have been some debate, but almost all of these conversations, including with many of you, have accepted our basic assertion that the, that balance is needed in this block. What was on occasion debated was more about details, about the setback of the historic buildings, the dimension of that, the specifics of the materials, and of course, the height itself, seven, nine, 12, et cetera. We submit to you that these discussions will continue and move forward with design and site plan approval. Design is what we do. Design is what we have done since moving here into unloved spaces in 1989. Design is what we would like to be allowed to do on this property, to demonstrate our dream of a model project which balances, yes, that word, balance, which balances the vital and sometimes opposing forces that make up our lovely city. Truly, we seek your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak on behalf of this project? Anyone here to speak against this project, opposition? All right, we close the public hearing, bring it back to the council.
I'll just start off by saying I think this is a good project. I will note that the staff conclusion said that there are some inconsistencies, impacts that could be mitigated by offering some zoning- that could be mitigated by offering some zoning conditions related to historic preservation, and also the visual impact of the proposed height changes. On top of that, I think we are seeing a lot of pressures in this area. We've had a council work session about the need to provide adequate mobility infrastructure in this area. We've also had lots of conversations about adding social infrastructure in the downtown and how difficult that is becoming, but we are having negotiations with developers of taller buildings about providing affordable housing, and as was noted, it's getting late. So I would prefer to have those conversations in the GNR committee. That's my request.
Are you asking to move it to GNR to discuss heights setbacks, historic precedent, the historic nature of the building?
Yes. And again, the ongoing conversation we're having about affordable housing, mixed-income housing in the downtown area.
You know, I think, I think they've already addressed the existing National Register contributing structures to remain. I think they've already addressed that. So as far as holding this project up about affordable housing, I don't think that that's really what this rezoning is about.
Not, no, it's not totally. It is about inconsistency, again, stated in the conclusion of the staff analysis, and as far as historic preservation, they say that there needs, there could be, it would be better to have more specificity about exactly what the relationship of the new construction to the historic would be, and that that has not been tied down yet. So I think we can have that conversation in GNR.
Yeah, I just feel like we've been talking about this area. We've approved other projects down here, 12 stories, not six months ago, I guess it was, not very far from here. So we're talking about height and density, and this is what we're looking for in this area. So I'm going to move for approval.
We'll talk about it. Question for Mr. Sayer.
Thomas, I think what Mr. Stevenson is referring to is staff's thoughts about the fact that there's not a lot of meat, if you will, as to what you're going to do with materials and the consistency of the historic nature of the existing building.
One of the conditions says that all the materials will be consistent with the materials that are currently in the district. Secondly, we are, we are saying that we would like to be reviewed by RHDC, even though it doesn't have direct authority, but we would like to be reviewed according to the Secretary of Interior standards, which is the conversation that we ought to be having, no matter what the nature of the historic district is. So we are actively seeking that dialogue and that overview that is one of the conditions. So it's not about being evasive, I don't think. It's relying on design so that we have something to really talk about that's specific, that we can see.
That is consistent with the neighborhood.
Thank you.
I didn't intend to say that there's any evasion here. I'm just reading the staff conclusion. It said additional policy consistency could be gained by reducing the requested height and offering a condition provided, providing for a defined setback from West Martin Street. And of course, that is one of the slides that got breezed through there, but which apparently was, a lot of the discussion in Planning Commission was exactly what the relationship in terms of the higher building to the, to the original facade was going to be.
Well, what we intend is that there be new construction in the, in the middle of the block on currently what's surface parking. The heights involved with, if we go above the two stories, there will be a setback that we will determine visually, how far back does it need to be? I can't tell you what it needs to be now, I just can't. Yes.
I would like to, I would like to offer a clarification about the maximum height condition. So remember, I said I didn't want to talk about that slide if I didn't have to, but I will. So what they have said...
How that very quickly.
Is that the height will be limited... I'm just going to read this, because it's simpler that way. Maximum height within footprint of existing structures, or within 123 feet of the right-of-way of West Martin Street, limited to five stories. And so that's, that's what this drawing is about. So they're, they're saying that the height right up at the street would be lower, and that they would step up, they could step up if they were farther back from the, from the right-of-way. And I'm guessing that 123 corresponds roughly to the depth of the building, doesn't it?
Who's drawing is this?
This is a drawing that staff put together to help the Planning Commission understand this issue, but, you know, basically understanding what that height would be like, how you might perceive that from the street.
So, so I'm hearing...
I think that's Russ's question.
There's conversation around this, but this is with the council. There was a request for this to move to committee.
Mr. Thompson made a motion as well.
Yeah, Mr. Th... Well, I didn't hear a second.
I would like to second it, if it's still standing on the table.
It's still out there.
With a consistency statement.
Yeah, so Thomas, what Kay asked earlier, I guess, but so I'm sticking with my motion, but I'd talk a little bit about how you might envision screening the parking, because, you know, with these taller buildings, that so much of that is... We've seen, not, not so much here, but we've seen in other places, some hideous parking decks underneath buildings.
Couldn't agree more. There, there were several neighbors that, that face the recent arrival, the recent seven-story parking deck, and, and the light that comes out is, is pretty horrible.
Yeah.
The parking we're proposing is completely underground, and there will be, it will not be visible by any neighbor.
Okay.
Period.
Okay.
I think that's the right thing to do.
Okay.
So, so you, your motion, what is your motion again?
My motion is for approval, and let me get back to where that statement, Kay has... Okay. So I'd like to move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June the 4th, 2019, contained in the agenda materials and to approve the zoning amendment.
And that's a second.
Okay, so move in second. I have a question for the city attorney. This motion is voted and fails, what happens?
It means that the property is not rezoned.
And as far as their case, they will have to start over? Or ask for an exception?
With the waiting period, unless there were substantial changes to it. That's correct.
It's a waiting period, it's two years, isn't it? Yeah.
Before we vote, I don't know, I, call me a little bit conservative here, but I would like to support Russ's recommendation to put this in GNR. I would like to understand it a little bit better. Doesn't mean I'm going to, you know, vote against this thing or not, but, but I would like to discuss it a little further.
And I guess, again, we've, we're sort of a tipping point here in our discussion about housing affordability in the city of Raleigh, and whether we, as a council, are going to make a consistent commitment to have a conversation about including affordable units. We've, unanimous as a council, amended our code to allow that discussion. We unanimously, as a code, adopted guidelines to give some predictability to a conversation about that. In addition to that, this is an area of town that it's fantastic that Raleigh Union Station's there, that Russ Bus Building is going to come with a bus transfer area, but your building parking, all the other buildings, their building parking, they know that the reality of today is that there, these projects are going to add a lot of cars, and that we have some responsibility to the broader community to say, are we going to be responding to your need to park cars and, and bring cars in and out of this project to provide the street capacity to support that? And so we've had a work session that looked at this parcel and many other site plans and rezoning parcels, thinking about how they were all going to contribute to providing adequate infrastructure for this area. And I'm just, it's, I think we're going to be setting a difficult precedent for ourselves if we start saying, you know, we said we're going to start considering housing affordability downtown, but case by case, we'll say, but, but not this one, and not that next one, and not the next one, and not the next one, and it's just going to put us in a difficult position.
So, so I'm, I'm just sitting at the table doing some math, and I'm actually going to make a substitute motion that we move this to GNR.
I'll accept it in GNR if we want further discussion on the item.
Second. All right. Okay, so discussion.
Yes, it's up for discussion.
Okay, so I'm not going to vote to approve that, because I believe if you're waiting to get this affordable housing question, that, that building will probably fall in before we get this done, because it's, I don't think it's fair to hold that over this developer's head until we may or may not ever come to a conclusion on what we may or may not ask a developer to do.
And, and I understand both arguments, and I also understand our rules and policies on how projects kind of move forward. That's why I made the motion, which was properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed have the same right?
No.
No.
Okay. So that is a 5 to vote.
And Mr. Stevenson? That's with all due respect.
I appreciate everything you're saying, and I think Mayor Protan Branch is exactly right, that there, this is not a simple situation we're in. There are realities of folks who want to build a great project. There are also realities of responsibility we have to the broader community, and we just have to work it out.
Okay. All right. With that said, this will be sent to GNR. Next, we have text change TC 1B18.
Now, to make sure you have closed the hearing.
Yes.
You are closing the hearing?
No, I'm going to leave it open. The hearing is going to remain open. In case there's...
Okay. Well, then you need to continue it to a date certain.
We will continue the hearing until, when is the GNR?
Hold on. I knew that's what you were going to ask me. I'm going.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
I have it right here. 12th, June 12th.
So it's going to be heard on June 12th?
I don't think I have a choice.
Bring this back on the 18th?
Yes.
So...
Can you do that?
So it will remain open until June 18th?
Can't do June 12th?
June 12th is a couple...
Time.
What would be the next one, Kay?
My next meeting's not till August.
Yeah, that's right. We counsel a 25th meeting.
Oh, we do?
Today, yeah.
So will you be hearing this on June 12th?
Tansy?
It's really a question for the committee.
It's for the subset of committee.
What are, do you remember what two they are?
We have one that's running on the clock, and one that is not. Is that correct? So we will take it into committee, and we will have to hear the one that's on the clock, and we will hear this one.
All right.
We'll push the other one out.
It will remain open until June 18th. We'll bring this back to the council on June 18th. Is that, does that resolve?
GNR on June 12th.
Yeah, GNR has it on 12th, and it'll come back to council on June 18th, which is date certain. Okay, cool. Thank you, everyone, on that. Text change TC 1B18.
Thank you. This is TC 1B18, is the omnibus list, the use-related clarifications text change. This text change would permit breweries, wineries, cider, distilleries and cideries as a principal use in the downtown mixed-use zoning district with certain conditions. It would modify the requirements for remote parking facilities and clarify restrictions related to produce stands. This text change was seen by the Planning Commission at their May 14th public hearing, and they voted unanimously to approve it. Briefly, this was heard by the Growth and Natural Resources Committee on May the 13th, with, with the errors category being moved to the city council. On May the 19th, the city council authorized staff to prepare draft ordinance. The, the terms winery, excuse me, distillery and ciderie will be placed under the light industrial use category. It, it will permit wineries, breweries, distilleries, cideries in the downtown mixed-use district with the restrictions that there shall be no distribution of off-premises product, and there shall be no outdoor storage of the production materials. With the remote parking, the currently, the UDO says that remote parking facilities may only be permitted in the same contiguous zoning district as the principal use being served. This text amendment would change that to allow remote parking to be located within a district that permits the principal use being served.
So in layman's terms, what does that mean?
Yeah, what's that mean?
That, that means if it was, if it was, it was in a, it could be a different zoning district, but as long as it permitted parking as a principal use, it could be located on that property.
Okay.
The parking could be located?
Correct.
So if you're in downtown district and you have remote parking in a residential area, if it's a parking lot, then it's allowed there?
If it's a parking lot and it's permitted within that zoning district, then yes. The last element we have here is the produce stands. That would, this text change would modify the definition of produce stand. It would clarify that a produce stand cannot utilize a permanent building, and it would, would state that the property could otherwise contain an unrelated yet proximate permanent structure. The staff is available for any questions, any additional questions.
All right. Any questions? All right. This time, we'll open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? So anyone to speak on this? Is there anyone to speak on this? We will close the hearing, bring it back to the table.
I move to adopt the proposed...
I have one question, real quick, as I'm thinking about this last one. Would this impact the farmer's market within City Market? So there's been a longstanding farmer's market stand that operates maybe Wednesday through Saturday?
They're actually moving that to Moore Square.
Been permanent for, yeah, it's not in mark, in, in City Market.
City Market, which is not Moore Square?
Yeah.
That farmer's market, which is done by DNR, Downtown, DNR?
No, it's not. No, this is a permanent, it's a, it's been there for, since Gail came on city staff.
Wow, wow, okay. Predated me.
Five years ago.
So City Market, right? It's been there a long...
Right next door to Vix. So it's been there for quite some time. I just want to make sure that we are not...
When that was in GNR, no one brought that up to us at all.
I want to make sure we're not hurting them.
Yeah, this, this would be, this language is different than what, what you have at the, at the farmer's market. That's in a permanent indoor structure, whereas this is really just for something that's of a temporary nature.
That sounds great to me. I just want to make sure we don't hurt our friends.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June 4th, 2019, contained in the agenda material, and approve the zoning text amendment.
It's been moved in properly second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. Text change TC 319.
Thank you.
Good evening. This will be the easiest text change you've ever seen. This changes no regulatory content in the code and merely changes the name of a document that we reference of our fee schedule. So the code contains about 10 references to the development fee schedule or something similar to that. The name of that document is changing to the city of Raleigh fee schedule, and that will happen in conjunction with our budget this year.
Okay. Any questions? I opened the hearing. Is anyone here to speak on this? Anyone here to speak on it? Is there anyone here to speak on this matter? I close the hearing, bring it back to the table.
I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated June 4th, 2019, contained in the agenda material, and to approve the ordinance.
Jager.
It's been moved in properly second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. 2030 Comprehensive Plan Update CP 2A19, Managing Our Growth.
Hi there. I'd like to talk to you about the 2030 Comprehensive Plan Update. We're in the final draft review and adoption phase of this project, which has been ongoing for several years. The goals for the update were to respond to the latest trends in a great recent planning initiatives, including the strategic plan, incorporate new and emerging best practices, and refresh stale policies and actions. Just as a reminder, we have had extensive public process here, including 2,000 points of citizen input and 300 comments on the public review draft that was published... and 300 comments on the public review draft that was published immediately before it came to you for your council briefing review. We did publish that in installments because it's a big indul, uh, big document and they were published from April through October of 27, 2017. We've talked with you about this on several occasions, most recently on March 12th, when you referred this to Planning Commission for review. As a reminder, you encouraged them to structure their review in five easy pieces structured around the vision themes of the 2030 Comprehensive Plan. Tonight, we're talking about their recommendation for the first piece, which is the, structured around the managing our growth vision theme in the comprehensive plan. We're right here tonight. A girl can dream we might get down here tonight. We'll see. Again, organized around those themes and the managing our growth theme. We'll be talking about the introduction to the plan, the framework section, regional coordination and the implementation section. Again, so those are those four pieces we're gonna be talking about. I'm gonna, I'm gonna talk to you about each of them. If it's too much, tell me it's too much. So the introduction basically explains what the plan is. It's an introduction and it emphasizes our city's commitment to sta, sustainability and how that commitment informs the rest of the document. It talks about the purpose, how it should be used, how it's organized and also the civic engagement process that resulted in the creation of the plan. Plans and policies, things that have happened since the adoption of the plan in 2009. The plan kind of talks about itself and we try to pay attention to it. And then also your city strategic plan that you worked together with the manager to develop after his arrival in 2013, as well as the data book that we update regularly. All of those inform this section of the plan. You remember, we published a white paper that talked about, basically projected everything we said we were gonna change as part of the update. We said we would refresh statistics, identify key policies relating to zoning decisions, incorporate information about the 2009 planning, the, actually the update process and the strategic plan and also outline the update's engagement process. Planning Commission made a recommendation for the introduction. One text recommendation change for the introduction, which was, speaks really to how the plan is used and how key policies are used in terms of determining consistency. So, and that language, so what it previously said has struck through and the new language as represented, as recommended by the Planning Commission is shown here in underline. The next section that this public hearing covers is the framework section. So this examines trends related to population growth, land use, transportation, environmental resources. It presents the vision themes that we're organizing our review around, as well as the vision statement. And it introduces two really important maps for us from a vision and policy perspective. The growth framework map, which is our vision map, and the future land use map, which is a policy map. This section has a handful of subsections, planning context and key issues, those growth forecasts, the vision and themes that I mentioned previously, those important maps, and then a section about the power of planning. So just an example of the maps that have been updated as part of the refresh. The graphic style of the plan has changed dramatically. As part of this update, we have tried to make the maps more legible, ma, make them more useful and improve just the quantitative analysis that they present to help us understand what's happening in the city. I think residential growth is a great one. So here we've made it clear that the unit changes based on units per acre. Previously, that wasn't totally clear and it really shows where growth has been happening most intensely in the very core of the city in this particular example. The growth framework map also experienced glamorous makeover in style, but also in stubs, in substance. So you can see the two styles here. But then the content changed, so we took off the future rail stations and the transit-oriented development areas that went with those and the multi-mort, model corridors that were based on the rail stations. We revised the downtown regional center to match other definitions, specifically the downtown plan. We took off the city growth centers and mixed-use community centers. I'm sorry, we simplified those. And then the urban corridors and parkway corridors were removed in favor of the frequent network from the Wake County Transit Plan, which we have adopted as our guiding transit document and the commuter rail from that as well. We've added the potential future rail corridors based on that plan and then a quarter-mile buffer around the BRT corridors from that plan as well. We've also, we used to have a map in the plan called green print. We've incorporated that map into this one. The thinking being that showing that in context with everything else was more useful than putting it on a lonely map over in the corner over there. And then also that new color palette that I mentioned. You can really see the graphic change and the substantive change when you zoom in and look at the downtown area. So remember, we talked about green print, which on this map is showing up in these areas down here, this is an example. The commuter rail corridor is showing up here. You're seeing the frequent network in these gray line work. And, um, just the legend has been updated. Again, your future rail stations and those TOD areas. We're not really focused on that spot area so much as the promiscuity of the corridor, right? In this new vision. Similar to the introduction, couple of important documents to the framework. Again, the plan talks about itself, it's fancy that way, the strategic plan and the data book. White paper topics similar here that we would refresh statistics, incorporate other planning efforts. I mentioned already the reflection of the Wake County Transit Plan, but also our new thinking as a city about resilience. The evolution of our thinking about Dix Park over the life of the comprehensive plan has come a long way. And then also updating the growth framework map. All of that was projected by the white paper and has been accomplished as part of the update. And just the particularly relevant vision themes to this particular section of the plan. The growth framework map in particular really resonates with coordinating our land use and transportation, managing our growth and that green print Raleigh Sustainable Development Vision theme.
You can tell all of us, planning policy wonks are excited at this new, uh, new framework map.
Right. The Planning Commission made two recommendations in the framework, in the text of the narrative of the framework section. One of, both of these relate to their sense of the importance of affordability to our community and that that needs to be reflected in the language of the plan. And so they have added this phrase about the expanded supply of affordable and workforce housing options to provide opportunities for all segments of our population in all areas of the city. And similarly, in talking about higher density residential and mixed-use development, housing options at all level of affordabilities and the diverse, the diverse customer base needed to support successful new local and regional public transit services. So really hitting that affordability issue in their review and recommendation to you. The third section I wanna talk...
The action.
The, the third section I wanna talk to you about is regional and interjurisdictional coordination. This is really how we talk about regional issues in the plan. Climate change, shifting economy, community patterns. Basically recognizing that we can't always act alone. Sometimes we need pals to help us get there. Again, broken into subsections that focus on transportation, land use and management, economic development, education, public libraries, environmental sustainability and natural resources and public facilities. Forty-eight policies and 33 actions in this section. Just to give you a sense of the extent of change as part of the update, relatively light. Most of the change here was really in the narrative. So revised policy, a removed policy and then revised and a removed action. The list of relevant plans and policies that we reflected on since adoption of the 2009 plan is longer here, so the Wake County Transit Plan, major investment study, a downtown operation study. Those are both city efforts that we have initiated to help us implement the Wake County Transit Plan in our jurisdiction. The TJ COG Transit Corridor Land Use and Housing Study, Wake County's Affordable Housing Plan and the Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan. So trying to cast a wide net to look at what our regional partners are doing.
Question. Under regional coordination, just, just noticing, it talks about adopting some topics from the white paper, including the Durham Orange Light Rail project? Is that gonna come out since it doesn't exist?
Uh, well, the current, the most recent incarnation of that plan has died. I think Transit Plan will carry forward in Durham and Orange Counties and we would wanna reflect that in the plan.
Right.
I think we'd wanna look and make sure that language is written broadly enough.
Right, so probably shouldn't say light rail.
Mm-hmm, probably not.
Okay. Uh, well, and, okay.
So the white paper forecasted that we should incorporate new initiatives and planning developments and remove outdated references. You've added a new one to the list. The most relevant vision themes here are that green print theme and coordinating land use and transportation. We did consult with other city departments on a number of sections of the plan. The, this interjurisdictional one, specifically we can, consulted with public utilities in addition to outside agencies. We did have public comment from Triangle J. There were no public comments specifically about this section of the plan. And I haven't mentioned this previously because there were no public comments on the framework or introduction sections of the plan. The implementation section is the last section I'm gonna talk about tonight. It describes how the policies and actions in the plan should be carried out. Basically tells us how to make the plan happen and how to administer it, how to monitor it, evaluate it and update it. So, some language, again, broken up into sections here. Talks about zoning regulations and consistency, our relationship to the CIP, how we update the plan, how we amend it. It speaks briefly about small area studies and also lays out an action plan, including the action matrices. So there are 12 policies and 11 actions, again, showing this to you to help you understand sort of the extent of change here. Most of the change in this section is coming in the narrative. The revised policy replaces the completed, this five-year plan, uh, plan update strategy, which upon reflection, Steph has felt like is not super effective or it just makes it hard to talk to the public. And so we have switched the recommendation here. The new language is for an annual thematic update. And then the small area study, we've added this action to call for the rolling adoption of policies, the rolling amendment of the plan rather than that two-times annual amendment to, just to keep the plan current. So previously, we had not been doing this and it, it made for a backlog of work. It made it hard for everybody, you, staff, the public, to know what was going on. And so that is the, at the heart of that change. The plan is relevant to itself, imagine that. The white paper here says that we should incorporate the UDO in the strategic plan, change the plan update and revise the small area study subsection, which we have done all of those. Couple of other things that happened as part of the update. We refreshed all the nomenclature about city departments and outside agencies to reflect current naming conventions. And then the, that was rolled into action matrices throughout the document. What questions can I answer for you about these four sections of the plan?
The growth framework map, F2. First of all, we adopted recently the small area plan for Falls North, which re-designated part of Raven Ridge as Parkway, but the map indicates the entire length is urban.
So the growth framework map and the urban form map are two different maps?
Well, I think it's the same on both.
Are you, are you talking about the urban form map or the growth, which?
I'm, uh, both, actually.
Okay.
Right now, I'm looking at the growth framework map.
Are you looking at the staff report in the backup? Or you're looking at the flipping book online?
I'll tell you in a second. I'm looking at the staff report. Page seven.
Okay. And I would say this content...
You're talking about this map?
The blue one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so the, um, growth framework, right, the growth framework map, we typically have not been amending. It does not, uh, I'm gonna have to look at that. And then I would also say you took that action two weeks ago and the content I'm showing you tonight...
Right, and all we're saying is...
Can't possibly have caught up.
This is, yeah, this is our opportunity now to say, okay, these changes have happened. We're getting ready to adopt something, let's go ahead and incorporate those recent changes.
Uh, I think, I was just, was gonna say, you will see a, a kind of a caveat phrase at the end of each staff report that basically says, anything you've done since we prepared the content you're looking at would be reflected in what we publish as the final document.
I just wanted to bring it to your attention. The other thing that's, for me, that's more troubling is that about a third of District B lives north of 540 and, and, and lives along the Falls of Neuse Corridor and that community is heavily vested in the, in the corridor. And I'm disappointed that, for example, Falls of Neuse, north of the river Dun Road and the remaining portion of Raven Ridge are still indicated as urban corridors. And I really would like to see that changed to Parkway because that really represents the consensus of, of the community. So, so that would be my request, is that we update these maps to reflect a change to Parkway rather than Urban Corridor.
And are you talking about the growth framework map and the urban form map, both?
Yes, so that they're consistent, yes.
Say something.
I believe that there's no designations on these streets on the urban form map, but you are correct about the growth framework map and that's an easy change to make.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions, councilors?
Bynum.
Yes, ma'am.
As it looks at the, at the great, growth frame map version, have we, have we tweaked that and it seems like it's changed a little bit? Have we tweaked that from the last time we saw? We used to call them little fuzzy green, pink things, now they're purple. Have we changed any of those, yeah, that? Has that changed at all?
Talking about the growth center and the mixed-use community center?
Yes.
The city growth centers, I think, were adjusted in response to the removal of the future rail station in the TOD area. And then the mixed-use community center, I think, are graphically represented a little bit differently. They were very fuzzy in the previous...
Yeah, they were pretty kinda fuzzy.
Uh, and I believe they are, so this previous drawing, um, uh, is an illustrative or art, or artistic and the new drawing is GIS-based and is more closely place-based, so a little less fuzzy. But the intent there is that the mixed-use community center does not have a hard edge that stops at a particular parcel. It still is, um, and again, this is a vision, not a policy map.
Right.
Uh, and so the, just us, we have moved to a GIS-based program to generate it, to make it easier to update and manage. But the intent is that it is, it is an illustrative vision map and not a parcel-by-parcel regulatory or policy map.
So that makes sense to me. I understand the need to do that, so it makes it easier. As that relates to other areas that we've designated as growth areas or centers of commerce or whatever we're calling them, do we have more visualization of where those are currently mapped in the, in the, in the new update?
This is, this is it, it is the growth framework map.
Okay.
I'm not sure, I, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not understanding your question.
Let me ask it a different way. So, I'm gonna use one that I know. Along Western Boulevard, we had looked at the area around Mission Valley as a growth area. Is that still there? Because when you look around, you look through here, you, I can't find that. Now these little... Yeah, it's hard to, yeah. And they're probably still there. I just, it's hard to identify if they're there.
Right. So all of, so here's Centennial. Can you see this down here?
Yes.
Okay, so the...
I don't see anything there, so we...
There's the blue blob, the blue, the blue is the mixed-use center. And then I would also say that Western Boulevard, all of that is in the, showing in the commuter rail corridor. And so both of those are part of the vision of what you called, I think you called those growth areas. And so that swath along Western Boulevard would take in the Mission Valley Shopping Center that you're talking about. Do you see that darker orange along Western there? So that is an indication of a growth area in addition to that mixed-use center, which is more of a node versus a corridor.
Okay, I was just trying to find some of those, and they're just hard to read. Thank you.
Sure, sure.
So at this time, I will open the hearing. Is there anyone here to speak on this? Is there anyone here to speak? Is there anyone here to speak? All right, I will close the hearing and bring it back to council for discussion and direction.
Ready to make a motion to approve the 2030 Comp Plan Update CP 2A-19, Managing Our Growth, and incorporating the two recent changes, one obviously to regional transit over in Durham Orange, and the other being the Falls North.
Right, so I can enumerate that as Falls of Neuse, north of the Neuse River to Capitol Boulevard, Raven Ridge and Dun Road, to re-designate those as Parkway.
If that's what the plan says, yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Second?
Second.
It's been moved in properly second to approve of this said adjustments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right. Those opposed are the same, right? Motion carries. Thank you so much. That is the end of the printed agenda. City Attorney, do you have anything?
I do not.
City Manager? We are adjourned.